Ashen, if you would. Oh, thank you. I'm gonna get us going with our working session here. Ashen, if you would with the role, please.
Commissioner Beeman. Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner LeBarre. Commissioner Light.
Present.
Commissioner Marchewski. Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Oh, Commissioner Robbie.
I'm here.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. Yeah, I do believe Commissioner Marchewski is in the building. And I think our three other colleagues are on their way. I spoke to Commissioner Scott, in fact, on the way. And she's actively trying to be here, so. Moving now to public participation. Do we have any public participation at this time? You get one minute here at the working session. You'll have three at the full board meeting later. Any in-person public participation at this time? Seeing none, would move to any online?
No, Chair.
Great, thank you. Move then to the report from the county administrator.
No report.
Or any report from the BOC liaison?
No reports.
Great. We will be about the business of the committee then and move to Ms. Jones-Elther and hear a little bit more about the 2025 through 2028 budget reaffirmation process. Answer any questions and Catherine, I turn the floor over to you.
Okay, it's gonna be a second. PowerPoint's being weird. I got it. Okay. Okay, sorry about that. So I am back for you to talk about more things budget as we have been doing the past couple meetings at working session. So it's a little bit of a different layout tonight, but I wanted to start with following up to your questions from last meeting. Then I'm gonna jump into just an all-fund summary because the last meeting we talked general fund only. So just a quick overview of all funds, giving a service area group highlight. And then I'm gonna go into talking about the program review process. I think it's been working well to have you all ask questions as we go, so I'm cool with that. Hopefully, hopefully, only 40 slides this time, so hopefully we can fit it in. So yeah, so quick follow-up to board discussion. So Commissioner Robbie, this was for you. You asked for a breakdown of position changes by union group. I don't know if you have any questions, but here it is. So largely, most of the position reclasses are within the AFSMI units. And then the non-union group is the next largest. And then position creations are more on the non-union side, but there is one AFSMI position also being created.
Catherine, I'm gonna interrupt you just to ask a question of you. If you would prefer to get through the presentation in total or if you'd like us to sort of ask questions as we go. There's no right or wrong answer?
Given the variety of topics in this, I'm cool with as we go because it's gonna be a lot to pick back up at the end, so.
Okay, well, colleagues, if you have questions, give me the nod and we'll facilitate as best we can.
Thank you. Okay, we good? Um, next slide. This was a request of just understanding the history of interest earnings. Because we've been talking about how the past two years we have seen record levels. We have not anticipated budgeting them. And largely that is because all of the preceding six years we have well under a million dollars. And it feels a little bit nerve-wracking to count on revenue that we aren't sure when it will come or we don't have enough of a trend established. 2024 is a projected number. We've so far booked about eight months of interest through September. And so a projection of future revenue there. And the context of how this fits into the general fund, because I'll be back at the next board meeting to talk Q3 budget. So I'll give you more context there, but just wanted to make sure that that was provided for this discussion. Last item was a question on parks. So Megan is here. She's gonna talk through the Director of Operations. If you wanna come chat.
For anyone who doesn't Megan know who you are, your name and full title would be welcome.
Sure. So, good evening, everybody. I'm Megan Von Filio. I'm the Deputy Director of Washington County Parks. Thanks for having me here tonight. So I believe the question was just a little bit more about why the Deputy of Operations position was put into the budget. So currently, I oversee all of the parks recreation operations, park and preserve maintenance and stewardship, administration, finance, outreach, communication. And so through our strategic planning process that we're doing alongside our five-year recreation master plan, which will be coming back to you in December, you'll be able to see that. The recommendation was to start to transition into a more streamlined approach in terms of allowing us to better organize a department and facilitate management and provide support with like services. And so we utilize the budget timeframe and have asked for the consideration of starting with the operational deputy. In the future, our kind of long-term plan would be also adding a deputy of maintenance to cover both maintenance and stewardship. But that's more along our five to or three to five-year plan. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Robbie.
Thanks, Megan, for that explanation. Would it be possible to see where you envision this being in the org chart?
I have a very high level one. So it was Parks Commission, the Director, and then the Chief Deputy and the Deputy of Operations kind of are aligned. And then, so then underneath the Operations Deputy, you want me to keep going, would be all the different facilities. So we have facility superintendents at each location.
That's under this position?
That would be under this position, yep. And then under the Parks Administration would be our maintenance, or I'm sorry, our Finance and Administration, our park planning, our HR side of things, our IT, asset management, and our advisory committees that we support, and then as well as board support or commission support.
That's all for this position? So and is that?
No, that's through the, I'm sorry, the last thing I just said was through the Parks Administration position. Through the operations position is the rec facilities, so like the outpark facilities.
I might need to see.
Rolling Hills, Pierce Lake Golf Course.
Yeah, I might need to see the visual to help me with that, but so. Is this something that we have discussed at like Parks Commission meetings and I just missed it or?
No, typically we don't take any of the position modifications to the Parks Commission.
Do you know how the Parks Commission will be looked in on this? I do feel like it's something that maybe they should know about at least, right?
So the position modifications, I would say, for the best of my knowledge, have never been brought to the Parks Commission for approval since, you know, with previous directors, including, and then up to now. But we are planning to talk a little bit about that strategic planning vision during our, well, we have the master planning final approval at the November meeting and then taking the strategic planning to the commission for review and discussion at the February meeting.
One general thought that I will share is I obviously want to learn more about this position, but I do think that we need to invest more in like field, more field staff positions. I feel like we're bulking up on the administrative side and maybe kind of like don't have enough field staff. So I do think that's a consideration that we should weigh.
Okay.
Commissioner Sanders.
So I was curious, you mentioned position modifications. What's being modified? You're asking for a new position.
Right.
Kind of modification.
I think I just call it position modification. That's the process we go through with HR whenever we make any recommendations. So we include both newly created positions, any modified positions. If we adjust job descriptions or we've anything through the J and Q process where we've modified, a job modification has occurred. So I probably, maybe I'm inadvertently calling it something else, but it's always referred to and we work with HR as position modifications. And that process starts in like June or July.
Okay, because it is misleading. I mean, what you're bringing to us is the request for a brand-new position, not a modification.
Right.
And then my next question is, what is it that is not currently being done that is requiring this new position? So what's falling off somebody's platter that facilitates the need for an additional position?
Fair question. I would say the creation of the new position will allow us to better handle and react to and respond to requests from the different facilities. So our organization kind of changes throughout the season. So for us, starting basically in March and going all the way through November, we're actively in recreation season. And so we have different needs on the recreational operations side. So whether that's something that we're hiring our 400 seasonal people and it's the, so having someone who focuses specifically on similar like things together is, I feel like we'll be able to better support and provide support both to our management team, our union team, and then our seasonal staff that we hire. So I would like to think that we haven't let anything drop. I would just say that we would be able to respond better.
Okay, so, I mean, I asked that question in part because we do have a new facility that has yet to go online, but is in the planning stage. There's been some grumbling about whether or not, you know, now that the mileage has passed, people are going to change their level of support. And so I want to make sure that with the request for this new position, there won't be any after-the-fact excuses for why the East Side Parks and Recs Community Center is not going to be treated equitably. So I'm not saying that's something that you can answer or respond to, but I just, I thought it was important and I just put it out there on the record.
Yep, and the one thing I would say is this will free up and allow for time, especially on the planning side of things. So then under the Parks Administration side where we do all of our planning and organizing, it will allow us to better respond and allocate time and resources towards the development of the Eastern Washington County Recreation Center.
Then my last question is, provide additional professional development opportunities. What does that mean? I know what professional development opportunities are or what professional development is, but you're looking to streamline.
Yeah, it should say growth professionally. It's another thing to advance to. And so like, if you have worked in Parks operations, then you could become the director of, it's like another place to take your career and stay in Parks is the idea.
Yeah, and provide some succession planning opportunities too internally and allows for additional growth. So currently, the deputy position has often been a person who's a planner, an urban planner, or someone with a, my background's environmental science. So someone who's on a different kind of technical side. One of the things that we have yet to, and one of the things our consultant pointed out, is the fact that recreation is another side of things that really we do a lot of and needs to be well-supported and have best management practices. And so we're really trying to help give a career path and trajectory for people who are focusing on recreation.
So I would love to know that that opportunity, I'm gonna steal some words from Commissioner Robbie, the field staff, when we talk about opportunities to advance, that it starts there. Not start somewhere halfway up the line for administration, but it starts at the basic level and offers anyone in those positions a path for advancement, not just focusing on folks that may be in a better position to be able to take advantage of those opportunities. Thank you for answering the question.
Are there questions right now for the Chief Deputy?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Forgive me, we have one more question, Megan, I apologize.
I'm so sorry. I was distracted. Just to be clear, these two, so you are going to be, you are the Chief Deputy.
I'm the deputy, so the only reason the chief comes in is when you have multiple deputies.
So you would move into the Chief Deputy role?
I would.
And so in the org chart, this org chart, the immediate one, it would be at the same level basically as you? Or what does the chief part mean? Like you wouldn't really be supervising them, I guess, but?
I see, at least in my conversations that I've had with Coy, is that I would still be providing direct oversight for the deputy in that position. We don't have anybody that's been at that level. And so we hope and we think we have the talent within to promote, which allows for additional promotion within the department. And so I think I would have a direct hand in the day-to-day.
But they would still report to Coy?
They would report to me.
Well, so there's the three to five-year vision chart that has been reporting to you, but then there's this one that has them reporting to?
Yeah, it's probably just, I quickly grabbed it and didn't plan to hand it out. So just more is working. That's the, I don't know exactly where the Chief Deputy comes in on the budget grid. I think it might be a little bit higher than the deputy position in terms of compensation. But I think that's partially because the oversight and responsibility for the department falls on that person more so than the other deputy.
Okay, well, if we could just get maybe some clarity on what the proposal is, that'd be helpful.
Commissioner Sanders.
So sorry, I wasn't concentrating on this as I was asking you questions. But as I look at this, so please don't take this personally. So the position would automatically move you into an upgraded position without, we wouldn't be posting that? So you just automatically get the promotion?
That's currently how it's put into the budget.
And?
Because we're not creating another position.
No, but when you look at these, so the current doesn't have an executive director, but the three to five-year plan does. So then I guess I'm pulling back in the modification, the position modification. So you're not only asking for a new position, there is a bump-up situation going on here. So I would, I appreciate the charts, but I think I would like to see, like, what is the, this is not a trickle-down, it's a trickle-up. I'd like to see what that really looks like.
It definitely is providing a position at the leadership level, so it is on the upper level of the department. As I mentioned previously, I hope that we have interest and I think we certainly have the talent within that we could fill that position, which leaves vacancies and additional ability for promotion internally. So we have over the years built succession planning into a lot of our different facilities. So each facility is managed by a superintendent, we have a manager, and then supervisors, et cetera. And so as modifications happen in those areas and people are either promoted up or they leave or they take another job, then we are able to fill and promote other folks throughout the department. So I can't, I can't say it's gonna happen at the, it does not start at the bottom, but I, or at our maintenance tech level or field level. But I can see that through this three to five-year vision that ultimately we're gonna be creating additional opportunities for people to have upward growth within the department.
I would love to see at some future date the plan for, well, I would like to see what is the demographic breakdown of your staffing?
Okay.
And what, if any, plans does your department have to increase what I would imagine would be additional opportunities for a more diverse demographic work? Because, what's the word that I want? Yes, workforce. So, I mean, I don't think I've seen any, any person of color in my interactions, which are limited with parks.
Okay.
And so if we're not making an effort to improve that, I don't see how things would change. And it would seem as though the opportunities for advancement are still limited. So especially because our parks service the entire county. Thank you.
Go to Commissioner Light.
Um, I was going to ask so that, um, it is fair amongst all that works in Parks and Recreation if this position could be available to be posted and maybe internally, um, but I, I would, I would, it would be more settled um, for me, and I think with some of, uh, my board brothers and sisters, if this position was available and posted and not just given and provided to you. Because it's not fair and we need to have, um, equal and available opportunity to all those that work in the county. And this is not a equal and opportu- uh, equal opportunity, uh, for all of the employees that work in Park and Recs or just, um, in the county at all. So we're trying to step away from just providing and giving positions. Um, and so that everybody has the opportunity to work towards, because there, I'm sure are, um, some uh, individuals in Parks and Recs that have, um, or may even have, uh, more of the credentials that you have and they should be given the opportunity. So if, if you all could come back to us, with some of the questions that have been asked and with a better way to present this opportunity to others, um, it would be greatly appreciated. So I'm requesting, um, that, uh, you all figure out a different way to, uh, create this new position, because it is a new position. And since if that's the ask, that the new position, uh, be available and the opportu- that the opportunity is available to all.
For clarification for the Deputy, the Chief Deputy Position?
Yes, for the, yes.
Okay.
For all positions.
I don't know how we would do that with you guys.
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
And so, and if, and if it's not possible, then I don't think that it should be on the, on the table to create the position if you can't figure out for it to be an equal opportunity for everybody.
Yep, fair.
Let me just ask a clarifying question and maybe with our administrator and, and our, in our budget staff in here. As it relates to what Commissioner Light, uh, just mentioned, is there anything in terms of the position approval that would preclude uh, any, any of the, of the, of the process requirements that Commissioner Light and I think others have, have alluded to? I just want to make sure, are you asking for authorization of anything that would then need separate policy go ahead?
So currently, the Parks and Rec and we might need to get HR more involved also at this point. But, um, on the position grid, there is a number of reclasses. One of those is the Deputy Position to the Chief Deputy Position. Reclasses traditionally are, every reclass that is on that grid, if it's occupied, the person in the position retains that position and they go to the higher graded position. So it's not a special circumstance that we're talking about. That's how those reclasses have worked in the county.
And forgive me, when you say have worked in the county, by, by county policy and past practice?
Yes.
Okay.
The new Deputy Position is being created at the level that the current Deputy Position is at. Um, so it's, it's at the same level. So before the upgrade, that position would automatically be posted because there isn't an incumbent that is in it that would then rise to the next position.
Thank you. I, 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 I think to sort of harmonize some of the points here, if I'm understanding you correctly and I have my own troubles with understanding, um, you are asking for creation of a position, but it is not a guarantee in terms of who, when and where would, would be the occupant of the position once ultimately created.
For the Director of Operations, yes. Because, so the reason we do that with the reclasses are, the position Megan's currently in is slated to be eliminated and the new position to be created, which would leave, we can't have a person in a position that's been eliminated. So that's why we have that practice of the reclassification. It's a lower raise. It's all of those things that have been happening. And again, there's many positions on this grid that are going through that process. Um, and have all been vetted by HR for proper requirements, proper grading, all of that, um, stuff in those recommendations. So the, but then the Deputy, oh, sorry, the Director of Operations would be an open posted position.
Okay. Commissioner Light.
So can you clarify, so your position is going to be eliminated? I just, uh, I'm trying to, I heard all of that, but I'm not, I want to make sure that's what I heard.
So we asked for creation of the, the Deputy of Operations Position, so it's a whole new position. But then, um, the past practice is you don't have two deputies, you identify one as a Chief Deputy. And so in that process and the fact that I'm the incumbent in that position, I, the recommendation with HR and in past practice, how it's been handled in different departments, is one is created as the Chief Deputy. And so that was, my role became the Chief Deputy role.
And so that's how that deputy, well, it won't be two deputy positions. It would be just the Chief Deputy and then a deputy.
Correct.
Now, if we do not create this position, is this going to uh, dysfunction operations or will we still be able to function as we have been if we don't create the, the Chief Deputy Position?
I will still function as, and work hard as in my current role as the Deputy, if it does, if it is the pleasure of the Board to not move forward with creating two positions.
And so the, it, I'm sorry, so the, if, with the Chief Deputy Position allow a, a great salary increase, do you all have numbers or?
Uh, I understand that the reclassification usually is four percent. So it's just something that happens with any reclassification. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then typically a, a promotion into a newly created position, if it was someone internally that moving to that would be eight percent.
Four percent or?
Kiara, can I ask you to pull up just a little bit closer?
It's four percent for reclassifications or the minimum of the new grade, whatever it is more beneficial for the employee. And not only for this case, for any reclassification in the county, it is four percent or the minimum of the new grade.
That's okay. And in this case, we're talking four percent. Let's be clear. But we can get you, we can get, I can provide numbers. We have seller projections. We can, we can provide them afterwards. But traditionally reclasses are environmental costs.
Commissioner Dill, please. It sounds like if it's the pleasure of the Board, I, I'd like to provide you all with a written response to the, the request that I've heard. Is that okay? Yeah, and Megan, I, I suspect you had not planned on such vigorous engagement, uh, tonight, but I, I appreciate that and
No problem.
That, that sounds like a great plan. I don't want to stifle any questions if there are any further though on this item. Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Appreciate it.
No problem. Okay, moving on. So, um, I wanted to revisit one of the budget policy slides. I'm, our heavy grant user departments informed me that the federal government as of October first raised the de minimis rate from 10% to 15%. So we're just changing this policy option, policy language option to say 15%. Just gives a little bit more administrative and operational room. And again, we haven't had discussion of which type of language we all, you all would like to see added to the budget. But, um, just a clarifying point, um, since that number has changed, um, from the federal level. And I did, uh, also in response to this, put a little subject in the header of what type of policy we're talking about. So we don't just see the numbers and we know where we're at. Next policy, um, we, at the last meeting discussed, um, adding a new budget policy that would require metrics of county departments. Um, so also similar to the other policy additions, providing two different, um, options for language. The first is intentionally vague. We are in the process of building toward program-based budgeting, priority-based budgeting. And it's hard to know exactly what specifics we would need for metrics that would make sense. So the first one says we want metrics, we're, and that we would come back with what that would look like and we could further elaborate in future budgets. On what kinds of, what would make sense. The second option gives an example of what that specific, like those specifications could be. Um, and this is, um, stolen from the Monroe Council on Aging, is that? Um, and they have used, uh, Andrew and I discussed this, they've used this phrase called service unit. And so each of their, each of the programs would say, this is a service unit and I target, I'm aiming to provide this many service units. And then we would be able to report the, out on that. How we currently have the program inventory set up, it's not set up in this world, in this language of service unit. So it would require another shift in that process. We'd be going back to departments to kind of develop that, um, which potentially seems a tiny bit premature if we haven't even looked at what performance measures we've already gotten from departments and what would make sense. Um, but again, just wanted to give you a couple of examples, something to respond to, um, in terms of creating a budget policy. That would be looking at metrics, not just from the nonprofits, but for, um, all county resources, not just general fund, all county departments. Um, making sure that we can really talk about those, um, investments of county resources regardless of the source. Okay, so that is the end of my follow-up to last, the last board meeting. So is there any questions before I move on to the next section? Okay, great. So last time around, again, I said we would primarily focus on the general fund. General fund had a lot happening. We had budget policies happening. We had other things happening. Um, so just wanted to come back and make sure we didn't forget to look at all county funds. Um, I will say, this is done in alignment with the recommended budget, which was before the millages all passed last night. They are not reflected here. I can't turn around a presentation quite that quickly, um, but we can provide those updates when we, um, and we'll be bringing a substitute resolution in line in a budget in the future that would show those just need more than a day to get that all ready. So overall, um, on the revenue side, our primary source of revenue is actually federal, state and local revenues. And then the next biggest source is property taxes. Um, and then followed by other revenue, which is basically the majority that's not fees and services or this federal, state, local or tax revenue. Um, on the expenditure side, um, this is divided out by the service area groups. So Health and Human Services is the largest at a hundred and eighty-five million, followed by Public Safety and Justice. Um, Support Services comes in at third, but it's roughly a third of the cost of the second one. So they start, um, declining in total overall costs and investment, um, from there.
Let me, let me, sorry, jump in with a question that relates to that. That a hundred and eighty-five million dollar number on the expenditures for Health and Human Services, is that including the Medicaid funding? Like we get at CMH that is, that is a pass through, but we have administrative burden on?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Commissioner Sanders.
Can you just clarify for the laypeople, land use and environment means what?
There's a slide later, but Water Resources, Parks, County MSU Extension is what land use and environment is. Um, and then looking at all funds, um, at the categories, again, federal, state and local revenues, this is just the same numbers we saw on the last slide, shown in a graphical form. So you can just see the, um, how they relate more visually. The Taxes and Penalties has that drop in twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and that's just from the um, Mental Health and Public Safety Millage. So now that that has passed, you will see, you can expect to see that number increase. Um, for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, there's a one and a half percent assumed growth factor on all property taxes in the budget. Whether it's general fund or non-general fund, we keep those assumptions aligned. Um, on the expenditure side, we see Personal Services is the only category that grows over time. Um, the Programming and Operations has that drop again from the Mental Health and Public Safety Millage. Um, Internal Services is flat, um, Transfers Out is higher. This ties back to the millage again. Um, and how the accounting of that works. Um, and then we see the reserves is declining and that's primarily the general fund planned contribution to fund balance in twenty-five and twenty-six, so that we can afford twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Um, twenty-seven, twenty-eight are other revenue, are reflected in the other revenue and reimbursement on the revenue chart when we're using fund balance. That's how it shows up in.
Got a question from, uh, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Commissioner LaBarre. Can you give us an idea of the breakdown of what we have between federal, state and local revenue? Like, like how much?
Yes.
Obviously, it might be on the forefront of some of our minds this evening.
Yes, I am happy to provide that afterwards. We can add that to a written update so you all don't have to wait till the next.
Sure. Do you have any idea of the percentages, just vaguely? I mean, obviously I'm not gonna hold you to it.
Yeah, fair. Uh, in this chart especially, federal revenue is the largest source because of that Medicaid revenue and CMH. We're talking over seventy million dollars. Of the two hundred is that. Um, but there are large sources of federal revenue and the grants that we receive at OCED. And, um, there's some federal revenue that's coming into health. So, um, I, the majority of our revenue is, I don't know if it's the majority. I, I can look. Tina, do you have a guess? Okay, I'm excited to ask if somebody else had a guess.
That's a fair answer for now, but just to be able to maybe, like, cause I think we're trying to like, think ahead a little bit, even though like, we are where we are. But it'd just be interesting to be able to see where those buckets are, what they want to go to. And so we have an idea of what we could be facing, should there be considerable rollbacks in some of these areas.
Yes. And, and I can, I know it's on the, um, agenda later tonight for the items for current and future discussion. So that is the thing, I can get at least the percentage breakdown. I can do that tonight during the board meeting and at least give you that little tidbit of information. But the analysis of what we could potentially be facing, losing, I think will obviously take more, more time. But we can start getting those breakdowns. Um, so yeah.
That's great. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you.
Okay.
Chair.
Uh, this is just a graphical representation of the expenditures by service area. Again, you can just, I know not everybody likes that chart full of numbers, so I'd just like to show it in picture form. But again, it's the same things we were talking about earlier. Um, you'll see that general government has that decline that's tied, again, back to the contribution to fund balance, um, that we talked about. Otherwise, the general government would be relatively flat. So it is a small portion of our funding. So that was the end of just all funds. I wanted to dive into each of the service area groups if we're good on that. So, um, oh, the talking VOC, oh, oh boy, what did I do? Okay, um, can we move that talking VOC icon thing? Okay, anyways, um, on this chart, it's really blocking how much of CMH it's taking up. Um, but that is the, haha, there we go. Thank you. Um, so we can see, we can see how much of that full Health and Human Services impact or cost is CMH. So I might have been wrong when I said seventy million, because that looks like well over a hundred million. So I think I had outdated numbers in my head on that front. Um, and then Health is the next biggest, but we're talking around twenty-nine, thirty million there or not, or twenty-five to thirty million, where it's just not comparable to the CMH. Um, so that second chart is just the same information as above, but just with CMH out of the picture so that you can see the other, um, part or the other departments in Health and Human Services.
Catherine, one, I'm sorry, one quick point on that though. Um, I, I think that's really impactful visually to see the scope. Um, it would be great though, uh, to contextualize how much of that is truly flexible funding and how much of that is essentially um, funding we hold for a moment, but that is sort of bound up by state or federal policy. Cause I worry if we look at this picture, we, we, you know, we used to have Public Safety and Justice as the biggest component. And it, it's not in the sense that it's not from a total money perspective, but in terms of flexible dollars, I think it sort of skews it to make it look like we've got more control than not. And I worry to Commissioner Scott's recent question here. The nine of us are trying to figure out when the, when the sky falls, how big's our roof? So, uh, anything you can add to that in the future would be, would be wonderful.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, CMH, that Medicaid funding is very much tied up into.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Thanks. Um, would we see a version of this chart that's not, um, maybe it's coming, it's not all funds, it's county funds?
So county funds, meaning not just general fund dollars, but like the state funds that's coming into like health? Or just general fund dollars?
I'm trying to think of, I guess, not the state or federal funds that, that are coming in.
Um, but like licenses and permits, fees and services, like those kinds of things you'd want to see. I mean, the answer is yes, I can get you any of this. I just want to make sure I can. I mean, the answer is yes, I can get you any of this. I just want to make sure I can.
I don't know if I necessarily want to see this for expenditure, or I want to see this for, no. I want to see what in the budget, like when we're talking about budget. I want to see a graph like this, that's what we are giving from county funds, not state or federal pass-through dollars, but what we are giving to each of these entities.
So that's the chart on the left of this slide, which is just.
Oh, the general fund expenditure.
Yes, so that is.
Thank you.
Yes.
Literacy at work. Thank you.
I love when I get asked questions and I have it right there.
Yeah, thank you.
Planned that better, or we couldn't have.
Thank you.
So these are all the appropriations with the general fund support. The one caveat to this chart, I do want to say, is that health and medical examiner appropriation does not yet reflect the extra 600,000 that was adopted by the board, and that's because currently it's resting in the BOC priority org. So it's reflected under legislative, and so I just didn't, I didn't want to change the BOC priority org, because we've been talking about it in that context. So the final health and medical examiner appropriation would increase by 600,000 dollars. But it is by far the largest appropriation, but a big chunk of that is also medical examiner services. So we can provide that. And then we go down there from CMH, OCED. And then the human services appropriation would be those, the new human services partnership dollars. And from there. And then this is just a category type breakdown, and we're talking percentage. Again, this is skewed by those CMH Medicaid dollars, so I could potentially rework this chart to call those out separately. So at least we could see how those are different from the other federal grants that we receive.
Like a pie of the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, like a piece of the pie.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I just got so excited. I blurted. Like a pie of the federal, state, and local revenues?
Yeah, so I could, there's other charts later where I break it down more segmentedly. So I can do federal grants, we could do state grants, we could do CMH dollars. That probably, I don't, I don't want to commit to that tonight, but I can get you that.
I'm not expecting it tonight, but I'm nerding out over that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yes. Any data. I can get you all sorts of data about the budget, and I'm happy to do that. Yep. And then the expenditure side, programming, operations is about 55%, and personnel is about 39%. And again, that is tied to a lot of different factors around millage services, et cetera, how, if we have contracts that we're fulfilling, that usually is what we're seeing when the programming and operations exceeds the personal services. Internal services is cap and fleet, it's only 5% of the budget, well under the 15% federal de minimis rate, and transfers out is 1%. Moving on to public safety and justice. So this is what, this pie chart you see here is the kind of pie chart we could do for that health and human services revenue, where we're just breaking down in much finer detail what those, those different departments are. So this one, we've asked in the past for more granular detail, so I had it set up and ready to go. But you'll see sheriff's office, 29%. This is all funds. Trial court, 17%. Contract policing is its own, mental health and public safety millage. The different components are also their own pie pieces on this chart. On the general fund expenditures, personal services is the largest category. And that shocking on that, we're talking, starting out in 65 million, growing to 75 million by 2028. The other categories, again, stay roughly the same. You see a slight increase in internal services. That's just due to fleet prices and assuming gas will cost more in 2028 than it does now. And then contract policing, I just highlighted this, so as we, that gap currently between revenues and expenditures is covered by the mental health and public safety millage. 2027 and 2028 do not have an adopted PSU rate, so we're assuming flat, flat revenue until we have a new adopted rate for those years, but we still project the cost increases. So taking a conservative approach on that and not trying to anticipate what those PSU prices will be in the future. Okay. Support services, this is, start to get into the really exciting parts of budget. So we're looking at all of the, just different departments that are providing support to other departments. So facilities and IT are largely, are the most expensive ones that we have. That is not just people, that is building maintenance, that's lawns, it's software maintenance, it's equipments. It's all the things it takes to keep our employees equipped to do their work. The comments or accommodation ordinance tax is the next biggest one, but that is largely pass-through dollars to the CVBs. And then we go down there from their risk management, finance, admin. On the general fund side, it's basically the same chart, but facilities and IT are not on there. They are, IT is moving to an internal service fund. Facilities has been in an internal service fund. And again, those are the larger expenditures, and we're intentionally aligning how we account for those two to be more similar. It makes our accounting a little bit easier for us in finance. And then another example, we're programming and operations, is a larger chunk than personal services. And again, that's going into all those maintenance contracts and things that we have to do. Microsoft, parking, all of our favorite topics. Land use and environment, so when we look at the 25 through 28 expenditures, the three bottom ones in the blue and green, those are all general fund. Parks is non-general fund, it's way at the top. So again, it's a, a much smaller category, and it's just departments that have kind of sort of relate together, but it's not the, they haven't been as largely, this is, sorry, a smaller quantity of departments involved in this. And we see personal services here is 46%, then program operations is 37% of costs. And the revenue sources are largely taxes that goes back to parks, millages, and going down from there. Civic infrastructure is another smaller group. I just, oh, there it is. It's equalization treasurer and the clerk ROD. These are all largely, I'm very impressed, Brian, by your moving that thing around in great spots. I really appreciate it. Equalization treasurer, clerk, registered deeds, largely these are talking general fund programs. There's a small chunk that is treasurer and clerk that are non-general fund. But these are really highlighted in the general fund presentation a couple of weeks ago. And again, we see, in this case especially, personal services is by and by and large, the biggest category of expenditures. A small amount of that operational budget, oh, here's some supplies to do your work. And then internal services is a bigger chunk. And again, that, in these cases, is primarily the cost allocation plan. As for the revenue sources, fees and services is the largest source. This is really driven by the clerk's office, all of the deeds fees, marriage licenses. All of those fees are the biggest chunk of revenue for civic infrastructure. Last one's legislative and general government. So legislative is the board of commissioners' budget. There's two orgs now. Personal, sorry, there's the board org, and then there's the BOC priority org. That chunk of programming and operations is largely those BOC priority dollars that are allocated to different purposes that align with your priorities. And then general government, just to round out the rest of the budget, the negative amount is that cap credit that comes into the general fund, and the rest of it. Sorry, there's a personal services chunk. This is amount reserved for future labor cost increases. So making sure we have stuff available, I shouldn't say stuff, resources available for future negotiations and not allocating it into departmental budgets until we know how those would go. The biggest chunk, especially in 2028, would be funds to hopefully increase costs. We do not have a lot budgeted yet for that market study. So just a quick piece there. And that is the end of the all funds and the numbers and stuff. And now we get to talk about the part I'm really excited about, so if we're good on that front, oh, yeah.
Any, any questions before we move to that part? Great.
Okay. So the program review process, so first, you're doing this, this is our next big step in program-based budgeting, and it was a big lift by departments, internal staff. Our goals in doing this were to inventory all county programs, whether they're funded by the general fund or outside revenues, including the grant dollars. This is kind of, if you were, back here in 2015, we, I think was the last time we did this mandated discretionary services inventory. It was a big spreadsheet of whether or not we have to do a program, and we kind of stopped looking at it at that point. This is really taking it to the next level of what are we doing, what are we trying to accomplish, what are the metrics? How do we connect those programs with the board and organizational priorities? And trying to set a baseline for providing data and metrics and future dashboarding. So what we, oh, sorry, I meant to say this. A lot of this is coming from a presentation that was given to department heads. So this is the same information they got before they undertook this process. So one of the things we wanted to just be upfront about is there are some possibilities that if we start inventorying all of our programs and we start asking for data and metrics, we're going to find some things that we want to talk about. So we're going to find highly effective programs that have been underfunded, and we're going to find programs that aren't meeting outcomes. Whether those are outcomes we want to go after or not, we're going to find inefficient programs or ones that we've continued doing for a while and aren't required and aren't meeting goals. And it's a way to really look at our resources, figure out what we're trying to accomplish, and kind of get the resources aligned with that. So when we find these, as we go through this process, and this isn't like a, we found them in this. This is going to take a couple of years of getting data and metrics. We'll keep you all in the loop. The big goal is for the next budget development, full budget development, which would be 2028 through 2031. We would be able to really use that information to really develop the budget. So right now, as we find these, really, we're just talking about identifying, determining next steps with admin, finance, and the departments to figure out if there are things we can do, we can tweak. In the meantime, to really be ready for that budget development in the future.
Catherine, forgive me, one quick question on that.
Yes.
You list highly effective programs that aren't meeting outcomes and inefficient programs. How are we going to distinguish in that between those three things and necessary and unnecessary?
Yeah. So first one's highly affected that are underfunded, so programs that are really maybe meeting a small population growth, but they're doing a big thing. And there's always the thing of, if this is like a pilot project that has succeeded, and there's always a, well, if this is a success, then we want to invest more in it. So that's the first option that we're, the first bullet. The other one at the bottom is like inefficient program. So a lot of this, sorry, to answer the question, a lot of this comes back to having that data and metrics that we have asked departments to provide. How would you know if you've accomplished your outcomes? And they provided that for 2024. We're hoping at the end of 2024, we can get that information for departments. It can be a report back to you of, I mean, it will be one year of data, so you have one data point. It's not a lot to draw trends or conclusions, but that that's where we can hit that baseline and start growing. I think whether it's inefficient or it's in a highly effective program are up for interpretation, and we don't know yet. I think we have to see what that data looks like and kind of respond to the actual data. We haven't like set thresholds. We just didn't, when we were talking about this, when I started presenting this to the department heads, there's a tendency to be highly protective of the programs and, which makes a lot of sense. And we just didn't want to pretend like there's not the possibility of identifying things that are going to be hard for us to deal with. And so calling it out in the beginning.
I think that's wise of you, and I, I don't envy the task ahead of you. I'd love to hear ideas at some other time in the future from colleagues and others in terms of how we can articulate those instances where something is ineffective and inefficient, but wholly necessary and unlikely to change, because it treats a symptom rather than a cause. And so I don't have the answer to that. I just flag it for that purpose. Commissioner Scott.
Might also, thank you, Chair. It might also be interesting to think about. We're asking some of the nonprofit partners we work with to give us some of this information. I feel like we're giving ourselves a little bit more grace in saying, oh, it's going to take you time to get there than we have with some of the CBOs, but that's probably neither here nor there, maybe didn't need to be said. But I, if there's a way we think about what we're asking them and what we're asking of ourselves, and so we're not, like, we're, we're looking at a kind of standard, and we're understanding that as a standard for both organizations that are not in the county government and organizations that are.
Yeah, I think the goal would be to get us to the place where we can, we, we would be comparing apples to oranges, but it really is, what is the best investment that we can make of county resources? How do we make the biggest impact? And I think having that standard, I don't think we're trying to necessarily treat departments differently, but we get to enter into new contracts with the nonprofits. So it provides a really good opportunity, and this is a big change organizationally. So that's why there's a little bit of that discrepancy, but I think the goal is to get to that standard process.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions at this point? Thank you.
Yep. So a lot of words on this slide. I don't normally like to do this, but this is the part I, you talk about getting nerdy about data. Is really cool. We have this giant spreadsheet. I meant to have it in PDF form to send to you all tonight. We'll get it out to you all shortly. Of all of the programs, what they're trying to accomplish, those impact scores that we talked about, again, into that in a later slide. Departments provided narrative answers for what the program is, what they're trying to accomplish, what their measures are, what impacts they're making, as well as working with the budget team to map out all their financials and tie it back to the resolution. So we have a cool source of data for a 25 through 28 budget. And then, again, we took those departments, they ranked what they thought the impacts would be, and we provided their whole narrative to a review team. It's made up of 33 people. We broke them out into seven teams. And the part that was really cool about this is we were really intentional. So we got participants from most departments. We reached out to union leadership, non-union, so we have union representation. We have, we had reviewers from the courts, from health, from OCED, from water resources. We really kind of hit a pretty good cross-section of the organization as you can with 33 folks. And then we also intentionally reached out to make sure we were trying to get frontline folks, mid-level folks, and then like people who are in that leadership, again, recognizing they're going to have different perspectives. And then making sure each of the teams had representation of all of that. So every team had union and non-union, frontline, mid-level, leadership, level employees. And then departments couldn't review their own programs. So they had to be, they oftentimes were programs that weren't even in their area of expertise. So it's a pretty cool process. And then we took, we wanted to kind of honor that we did have a small number of reviewers, and it's a pilot process. So we have a score from the review team, we have a score from the departments. And from the rest of the presentation, what we did, just because it's the first time, is average the scores between those two things. But we have all of that data available if we want to look into anything. I didn't want to data nerd too much on this. But this is just, I want to acknowledge the 33 folks who participated. I'd love to read all their names, but I'm going to be brief for time. But again, this is the wide perspective of, or the cross-section that we had in participating and scoring the programs. And then scoring overview, so this is going back, we had this discussion at the last board meeting about the different impact areas. This is just referring to the scoring options. Again, relatively arbitrary, when we go from negative to extreme. But these are backed up with a narrative statement, and then the review process either agreed with them or did not. So there's a number of programs that did actually, they ranked themselves as extreme, and every reviewer ranked them as extreme. So it was pretty cool that it worked out that way. I was not expecting that. So, and then this is just an example that was provided to the departments, and it, it kind of highlights what we talked about at the last working session, which is with these categories, the intention is there are ways to get to similar scores and be wildly different programs. So best practice compared to a mandated service, whether you have revenue coming in that's supporting it or not. But then maybe you're not able, it's a mandated service from the state, and maybe it's not really making an impact on climate equity, building safe and healthy communities, but is big on good governance. And that's only a couple of points less than something that's making a strong impact in a lot of areas. Or strong in some, impact in a lot of areas. So these aren't real programs, they're just made up examples of a way we can get to similar scores. So the other thing we provided to departments before they filled out their program inventory was was a definition of each of these impact areas. So equity is working to aim to address disproportionate impacts, looking at both internally and externally in the, um, in the Washington County. Trying to meet communities where they're at, creating additional opportunities, looking at, um, equal outcomes within the community. And then just giving a couple of examples of like things that can have strong impacts. So it can be addressing access to county services, it can be making sure we're, again, meeting the community. It could be having intentional, um, focus on internal services. So there's a lot of ways to make that impact and we wanted it intentionally to be broad enough that we could create multiple paths to a, a good impact. So the, each of these slides is, I was aiming for the top ten programs of each of the impacts. So these are the ten programs that have the biggest impact, um, on equity. So a number of them are in the health department, makes a lot of sense with the work that they do. I was, I'm really interested that materials management made it on the list of a really big impact on equity. So that one that I expected, but then also seeing like IT and the way they're supporting some, like staff is also making an impact there.
Catherine, could I ask a quick question about the previous slide?
Yes.
Yeah, when we use the word equity and, um, it can be used in lots of contexts, but the, the part here that says where they are allocating resources and opportunities needed to create equal outcomes within the community, usually we talk about, um, access to opportunities and so forth in equity. Is this equity in terms of, we, we just literally want the same outcome dispersed in all places? Or am I missing something there?
That wasn't the intention of the language, so if it's being interpreted that way, that's one of the places we fixed the language. This is a learning part of the pilot process. So, um, we workshopped that with, um, REO back when we were developing it and it got the blessing. And I honestly stopped thinking about it at that point, but I think you make a good point of addressing it, like addressing opportunity as opposed to saying we want the same outcome happening.
I don't wanna judge you by one standard if you're talking about another, that's all, so thank you.
Yeah, I think the goal was actually to do, create that there's different types of equity, there's different. And depending on the program we're talking about, whether we're saying same outcome for everybody or addressing opportunities, it would depend. And they all are versions of equity and we wanted there to be space for all of that. Yep. Climate action, this one we have an actual plan, so we can refer to the plan, but working to reduce carbon emissions, all their environmental impacts within the community and county government. This is one that we can expand upon, now that we have the resiliency officer on board, this all happened before she was onboarded. So, um, she didn't get, I just wanna be clear, she didn't get to have any input in this. But we, uh, can expand that into the future. And then similarly, here's some, the top ten programs. And as you might expect, water resources high on the list. And then the resiliency office, those are ones that are really directly addressing, um, climate. And then looking at, this is where you're seeing the environmental health program show up as opposed to other, um, health programs. So again, it's just a variety, you see energy and sustainability and facilities also on there. And then, um, at the bottom, parks, um, for the trails and the natural areas preservation. Building safe and healthy communities, this is really just very intentionally.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Robbie has a question.
All right, yes.
On the, on, yeah, on that slide, um, so help me understand how the scoring was created.
So departments ranked themselves on that negative to extreme scale, that's fifty percent of the score. The review team, um, most programs are reviewed by four or five folks. We averaged the review team score, that's the other fifty percent. So we just averaged the two scores together, um, so I can give you more detail on that if you'd like to, um, see it. But again, in general, we're treating the department's score, we're taking the program review team and treating them as equal, um, inputs into an average final score.
It's just so hard because, I mean, there's such a lack of, I think, uh, objectivity that's built into this just by nature. Like, you know, the, the fact that natural areas preservation is getting the lowest score on this chart of, I'm sure this, these are the ones that scored the highest of everything, but it's still the lowest on there. I feel like it's, you know, do, is it people with an environmental background that are reviewing this? Probably not, it's. Some of them are.
The department provided the worthy expert on the program, the review process was novice general representation of like, hey, is the impact that you're saying, does that make sense with like these scoring criteria? So we're trying to give aspects to both. But again, pilot, this is where I go back to like the pilot process of us trying a thing, but we can keep tweaking it to really be in alignment. And again, this is part of why I talk about it as setup for that future budget development because I'm hoping over the next two, three years, we can really get it to what makes sense to use. I think the other piece that's hard in a presentation, like the PDF is hundreds of pages. There's a hundred and eighty nine programs in total that were scored, there's a slide later on that. Like, I, I'm not gonna be, like, I'm not gonna sit up here and read a whole hundred and, or like two hundred and fifty page document. But there is a lot, I mean, I guess I could, but that would be really boring. We, so there is a lot of context behind this that we can provide and you can review and we can just see. But yes, you're right that there is a lot of subjectivity. Part of the problem with the pilot is having four or five people. Like, I think we, anybody in statistics would tell you that's a statistically insignificant number of reviewers. But it's hard if we're pulling just from county employees to get a large number of eyes. And asking an employee to look at a hundred and ninety programs is a significant time investment when there's already a lot of things happening, so.
I guess like also we have like empowered different citizen groups to like help us in each of these areas. Like we have the reparations commission and we have the environmental commission council. And I feel like their expertise may be helpful in helping us to rank this stuff too, rather than relying on people that maybe don't have the professional background. I, I guess like some of these jump out to me as like things that don't make sense. Like, why are we ranking lake level infrastructure for climate impact as second? That seems like a, a outlier to me. And energy and sustainability for facilities is second to last. I just like this, this to me like doesn't make sense the way that it's fall, fallen through your system, so.
Yeah, and again, in the like report version, we can give the whole hundred eighty nine. So this is, it looks like it's falling last, but this is really, these are the ten programs that are making the biggest impact. That's really what we're trying to show here of, but again, it's, it's hard. I haven't yet figured out how to best translate some of this big data stuff that we have into a concise presentation. So I think that's a piece that we can definitely keep tweaking. I think the advisory councils, you make a good point, we can work on ways to incorporate them for different aspects of this too. And making sure that there's an input of that expertise, especially where it makes sense. So building safe and healthy communities, this is again, um, intentionally combining that public safety and health that in the past have been treated as kind of siloed priorities. But I think we all recognize that there's a lot of interplay between the two. So health outcomes can impact how safe a community is and having like good, um, public safety can help people be healthier. And so making sure that we're not treating those as separate, but like how those interplay, um, to really make a strong community, having that community perspective as opposed to, um, like traditional public safety or traditional health. And so, um, again, I think this does speak to like some of this, uh, safety and healthy. This is a two-slide one, because, um, this is a place where we have nine that are the high, like extreme score. And then the next level down was sixteen point six, so it felt hard to not also call out these programs as well. Um, and again, just wanted to highlight them as, um, programs that are really making that big impact on, um, safe and healthy communities. And that you see that variety of health, you see some sheriff services prosecuting attorney services. So it is kind of targeting that, those programs that we wanted to make sure we gave some points to for their impact. Last one's good governance, I know this is when we talked a lot about last time, um, and again, taking a stab at being what we provided to departments was good governance is driven by accountability, leadership, integrity, stewardship and transparency within county government. And so we really are talking about, are we making the community aware of our existing resources, existing programs, things that can, um, really be utilized? Especially, um, that's sorry, I think it goes later. There's also the strong, like strong approval processes, making sure we're doing the right things in the right way. And then also using that measurable data. So there's a couple of different ways to really have that strong impact on good governance. And the one that's not highlighted there, but like if we're really, um, making sure like our stewardship, our financial, um, processes are in place and that also is another way to get the good governance in there. So treasurer, finance, IT, all makes sense, things that are kind of keeping the backbone, uh, going on this one. But then we also have, um, some of those programs like the M I D C grant, the health department. These are a lot of them that are very driven by data and they're getting the good governance points for how much data they are using and how well they communicated what they're doing. You all are on the list for your governance, um, so that's another, um, highlight there.
I thought that there was an internal review of people in that department to come up with their score. I didn't do a score on the board of commissioners.
I believe admin worked on it, I don't know. I just took the data, so I'mma step back on that.
I'm just calling foul, calling, I think that I am a little anal about my grades and I'd like to have a perfect score, but.
To be fair, I do believe the, um, department's score was extreme for the governance of, good governance for the board's governance. And so the review team is really the ones you should be looking at for the non-perfect score.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Who to really call out.
Let me know, let me know who to look at.
You're welcome. I had to get the heat up.
I caught it, I caught it.
So then, just again, data nerd, we talked about a hundred and eighty nine programs. We did this with the budget request process last year and just kind of breaking down, um, first, second, third, fourth quartiles. This is looking at total scores, um, and just seeing how the scores fell. So something that I wasn't expecting when we did budget requests, things were much tighter score-wise than they are here. Here we really do see that there are some programs that have very low score, fifteen point eight three. Some programs that have a very high score at ninety five point two, but the, um, second and third quartiles that are kind of the meat and bones, we're talking forty nine to sixty six point five. So they kind of have a little bit of a bell curve, um, that you would expect there's more programs kind of in the middle of those scores.
Catherine, forgive me, I'm gonna stop you, Commissioner Scott.
My God, it's me again, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, clearly I'm listening, um, paying attention to everything. Fascinated, right? I told you nerd night. I mean, I'm thinking about the two scores still, and then just when you said quad trial, it made me think like, oh, standard deviation, et cetera. All the statistical terms went through my head. And I'm wondering if at some point it might be, I mean, I'm happy to talk to you about it offline. If there were like large deviations between department scores and reviewer scores and what we can make of that. The data set I think is too small to talk about things being a standard deviation, but like, but really the, the kind of the delta between those, I think would be interesting to look at.
Yes, uh, so we have that by a program, I can get that information to you, most of them were not significant.
Oh, great.
But, I mean, I guess it might depend on what you would determine as significant.
I mean, I don't think we can determine that data set's too small, but.
Oh, yeah, again, a lot of them, like, uh, just from vague recollection was like a point four difference. So that like, and if the majority are hitting that, then it's kind of a, okay, so departments are scoring things the way that makes sense, but, yeah.
It's affirming, okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. And then I also, oh, sorry, no, also later on slide, we broke out them into the percentile. So it's like the, uh, which for the college admissions scores you got, you're like, you're in the ninetieth percentile or the ninety fifth. So just a smaller breakdown, um, using later, but there's nine to ten programs further. The other thing that's, again, small data set and skewing things a little bit is with this being a pilot project, departments kind of each took a different approach. And so health and O C D are more than, or about half of the programs in this program inventory. And so, and a lot of that is, like, health has listed every single project with really detailed nuances of what they're achieving, what they're doing. They took a lot of time with it, uh, their departments are like, this is new, I'm gonna take a really high level perspective. So that's another piece that like, over the next few years, we wanna make sure that we kind of are hitting the right number of programs so that there's not, um, any kind of skewing that might happen. But this is, we really wanted to start with meeting the departments with where they were at. And when I say program, whatever that makes sense to you, I just was like, let's start with what makes sense to you and then we'll kind of look and compare and kind of help manage that, um, on both sides of the equation. Or it could be that they really are doing forty three things and it makes the most sense. So that's what we're trying to just be a little bit aware of, um, that there is a lot, um, on that front.
Appreciate it, I mean, this is really fantastic, I, I know it took a lot of work to be able to try to come up with a program inventory like this. So you, you started to zero in on the part that I was particularly interested in or had questions about because, you know, CMH definitely has more than five programs, for, for example. Are we, when do you think the other, everyone else will take another look at it and have something that's more up to date? Because I wouldn't wanna wait another year before we take a look at it. Cause I would expect like some of these other ones like CMH to be up there in terms of number of programs like O C D and the health department. I would think probably the sheriff's office has more than sixteen programs too. So I guess we just didn't have a clear definition of what constituted a program.
So to be fair, I think sixteen for the sheriff's office actually makes a lot of sense. Cause we're talking divisions like contract policing versus general law enforcement. From a, I'm a community member, whether it's a PSU in front of me or a general fund law, I'm interacting with a sheriff deputy, right? And so like, if we get to the detailed, most granular level, we'd be treating those as two separate programs. And really, they're kind of providing the same service. Where I, in conversations with, especially with health, it was like, we're asking for targeted outcomes, we're asking for data and metrics. And they're like, this is the level I have to give you to give you good data and metrics. And so that was kind of, that they, uh, CMH, we worked with them, they picked these, these are like how they think of grouping their programs. And so part of the conversation we've had internally is, um, is program even the right word to be using? Cause it's hard to digest a hundred and eighty nine programs in general and like, it's a new thing. And so is it, I, and I don't have a better word, like division is too high level. And so like, you're kind of trying to like figure out what we're really looking for. And that is just a piece that I think, um, especially from this aspect, um, of where we go. And even like, like using county administration, like the racial equity office is eight and the county admin is five. But like, there's some areas where like racial equity would feel like a program with, like nested within the county admins. Like that's kind of one of those things where it's like the granular level of what the right thing is. But I think that's definitely also, um, something that we could utilize. You all of like what makes sense to you as a definition of a program that we can kind of provide back to the departments is like, this is what the board's really interested in of, um, trying to hit that right level. Cause the real targeted goal is like, this can be a communication document out to the public of all of the county resources that we're investing in, what we're accomplishing with it. And so, yeah, so I, I hear you, it's just, it's a lot if we have everybody get to the super granular level. But, I mean, to be fair, finance is at the most granular level, we can get finance it. It's like groups of two and three people in the finance category, so.
Yeah, I think when I think about it, maybe the word wouldn't be program, it would be service instead. Because if, just looking at this number from the health department and then when you send the PDF that has everything outlined, I would imagine the health department probably does forty three different things.
A hundred percent.
And I would think if it was, we're having conversations about how to put money where and as we're trying to get resources out or like have a list of resources out to the community. This, this doesn't allow us to say for some of these other departments, these are all the services we provide. And that's kind of what I would be looking for here, particularly with some of the more service focused or outward service focused departments like CMH and health department, O C D.
Yeah, I think that's a good, I did have to think of the word service, so that's helpful, um, and definitely a term we can use in the future if it helps.
Who, who wants to add in, Catherine, cause you're ask, I, I'm hoping you're still asking for our feedback on this. What I am trying to grapple with is. What I am trying to grapple with is if I describe this as a tool for how we self analyze, either purpose, uh, priority or sort of ease of use. And, um, as I've, as you've walked us through it, uh, one, it's very clear how much intentional thought you've put into it and that's appreciated. Two, I'm a little bit torn if I'm looking at what is a prioritization of what are the things we do and what are the most important? Or if I'm looking at a scorecard for how we view what we do from the position of the organization. I think both of which are valuable, but my guess is we're trying to look for a rubric where we can see if we only have $1, where do we spend it and, and, and how do we justify it there, not elsewhere? And I feel like what you're showing us tells us the organization's opinion from within the organization. And so I'm, I'm trying to marry those two different viewpoints. Um.
Yeah. I think that that is an accurate statement. Um, and again, when, when this is the first time and when this is the pilot, like I think it's hard to walk into a room and be like, what do you think we should look like? So this is really, uh, like, let's see what it could look like. And then let's like respond to that. And that's definitely love the feedback and definitely want to keep tweaking this. Um, as we go through the next few years. Um, so I do think that you were right on the dollar of like, if we have a dollar to invest, where does it make sense to invest? There's an element of if we need to invest, where can the dollar come from? That's another part that will be the harder conversations, but again, um, calling a spade a spade on that front. I think the other part of that where we're getting into kind of the scorecard is also getting into that dashboarding of like, here's a program. This is what, like, these scores are all based on what the department said they're going to accomplish. But we haven't in the past collectively across all county departments asked for, did you accomplish what you said you were going to accomplish? Yes or no? So it's also acting as that piece of not just what your intentions are, but what the actual data is showing us of what is happening.
Thank you for that. I worry we're not doing our service to you to give you more clarity, definition and more of a charge to use within the organization. And so I'd, I'd love to rectify that if possible. And I, I may be, uh, you know, alone in that, in that take, but I want to reemphasize again, what extraordinary detail you've provided here. And I don't want any of my comments to be critical or, or judged that way.
Yeah. And I think this is really one of the things we've talked about internally is really one of the biggest roles for you all would be setting that framework with the priorities, with like you setting the definitions as opposed to us like taking a stab at them. Like this is what you all are looking for. This is what you want to know what programs do. I'm setting up our services, if we're using the word service, like setting all of that up in the next iteration. This is, um, so yeah, for sure. Um, we have a new term started. I can put a plug in for priorities and plans and all of that stuff. It's a great time to kind of set that stuff up. And if we receive that from you, we really can implement it with this type of process.
Thanks for your patience.
I would be doing myself a disservice of budget if I didn't also talk about numbers. Um, so quick, this is just a visual summary of where our costs are. We do see a bigger chunk in the second versus the third quartile. And again, I think a lot of this is coming down to that granular nature we're talking about. Health had a very high number of first quartile programs, which is great. They do a lot of big impact. But because they're at a smaller dollar amount, it's kind of looking like we don't invest a lot in the first quartile. And so that's a thing that we just have to kind of figure out what the data is telling us, um, and how we use that. The general fund support is just the cost minus program revenue. Program revenue is any type of revenue that is not general fund appropriation. So fee services, grant dollars, Medicaid, um, any of that stuff.
Commissioner Maschieski, I think you had a question if you'd like to ask it.
Thanks, Sher. I don't know if it's a question more than it's just a comment. I have, I echo the thoughts about the, the incredible amount of detail and thought that's gone into this. Um, and I commend you for trying to establish service units. A fabulous, uh, endeavor to, to go through. In terms of seeing this again in the future, I would be curious to see a breakout of, and, and a ranking of the things that are not mandated.
Okay.
Versus things that are mandated. Um, give us a little clearer picture of when we're getting to those decisions about non-mandated services.
I can easily get you that.
Okay. So I, I appreciate it. Thank you for all the information. It's fantastic. Thank you.
One last chart. I know I'm watching the time.
Catherine, let me interrupt you to say, please do not worry about the time. We, we will cover that, uh, however needed. Commissioner Hodge had a, had a question.
Thank you. Just to add on to Commissioner Maschieski's point, because the scoring system seems to be based on whether or not it's mandated or non-mandated. Uh, if you could get us all that information, I would want us to be able to look at a way we could see the scores with the mandate removed. Because I think the, the point of, of that is that when we're looking at how do we have to fund and what do we fund? It's the non-mandated services that are the, the ones that we have to probably be most critical about. Cause of course we have to fund the mandated ones. So some sort of scoring around the non-mandated ones, uh, relative to each other and not the mandated services.
And I will say we do have more categories than just non-mandated, non-mandated and mandated. It's no mandate. There's a best practice because we wanted to give some points for that. A county policy is ranked lower than a federal or state priority, um, state mandate, just because if it's county thing, we can change it if we want to. So, um, but we can give that breakdown of all of that. Um, I am envisioning some kind of like growing this into some kind of report. So knowing what all of these things are, that becomes a, a chart on a page of a report that we can reproduce into the future. So.
Thank you.
Yep. Last one, just, um, looking at how the general fund support ranks. This is when I use the percentile, um, number. There's no trend. It's all over the place, but I just thought it was interesting. So, um, I think ideally we would hope that like general fund support is really skewing toward the like higher ranking impacts. But a lot of the things that we just have to do, we know would likely score lower. And so just a little visual representation of a, of a thing that I don't know quite what to do with, but it was an interesting shape chart. And I just thought I'd throw it in there for, um, information. So. And that is it. I just had a quick slide on the budget adoption timeframe. So, and that's the end. So if there's any other questions?
Open it up for, uh, any questions here. Commissioner Scott.
I don't have a question for you now, but I just want to tell you, well done. That was a pretty amazing chock full of information, really fantastically presented. And you handle all of our questions with grace. And I know we're not always easy, maybe why we didn't have a perfect score. So. At least, um, yeah. So really and truly it was, I just want to say thank you. It was, it's all of the presentations have just been great and they're getting better and better. So thanks.
That's what I'm hoping for. So.
Any, any other, uh, questions at, at this time commissioners? Uh, Catherine, I just echo Commissioner Scott's praise. And so th- thank you for the presentation tonight. Move then to, uh, item six, any items for current or future discussion? The one I have is, uh, I'd look to our chair to ask if there's a official designation of when you want to begin the next meeting. Seven 15. Okay. Um, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
We were shooting for seven fifteen, but here we are. Time to take your seats. All right. Please rise. You're already risen. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
All right, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Have a roll call, Ashlyn. Let's do it.
Commissioner Beeman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Present.
Commissioner Labar.
Here.
Commissioner White. Commissioner Robbie.
Here.
Commissioner Machewski.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Somerville.
All right, thank you. All right, it's good to be back, everybody. I wasn't at the last meeting, but very happy to be back at this one. And congratulations to all of our friends here. You will have the same Board of Commissioners joining you again, you know, for the next four years here, you know, so it's congratulations, and I believe that comes as a renewal. They renewed us for another season here. Yes, okay, indeed. All right, well. Yeah, you want to say hey?
I just, I just want to quickly say we had such a lovely meeting last time.
It was a
That's all, that's all I want to say.
With a brief agenda, I believe. But, you know, I hear it wasn't as fun, so.
I, I also have a point on that.
Yeah.
Um, it was led by Commissioner eight fourteen, AKA Caroline Sanders. What time the meeting got done?
Wow, that's impressive. That is impressive.
So, you've got some competition.
We'll see what happens.
Okay.
That's so, a warm welcome back to me, thank you. All right, well, we will move into public participation here. So here at Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting, you get three minutes for public comments. If you are in the room, you will join us at the podium. Got a great color-coded light system, starts at green, goes down to yellow, and you got one minute left, then goes to red at the time you have expired. Please stop talking when it's red, otherwise I have to stop you, and I don't want to have to do that. If you are joining us via Zoom, you hit the raise hand icon. Same thing is in the room. You got to state your name, city, or township. We need it for the record. Ashlyn has to put that down, so please do that, otherwise I have to remind you, and that gets awkward. If you are joining us via Zoom by phone, like you dialed in, you will hit star nine to raise your hand. I will call on you. Same rules apply. State your name, city, or township. I will, you will hit star six to unmute yourself. Say your thing, get three minutes. We also have a timer that will appear on screen to help you make sure you stay within your three minutes. In addition to public comment in the space and on Zoom, we receive written public comment that, that we have. So anybody in the room like to come on down for public comment? Please, now all at once, just control yourselves. None, all right. Well, then we will turn on the, our friends online. Do we have any friends online?
We do not, Chair.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, we're just going to close public comment. Wow. All right, well. Commissioner, follow up to public participation. Anybody got anything? You got a, you have a response?
Eight fourteen.
Okay. Like, I mean, you, this is a longer agenda than the one you had, just, just saying, you know, I'll do my best here. Yeah, okay, okay, well. We'll move on to liaison reports. Anybody like to give a liaison report? No? Commissioner Labar, what you got for us?
We had a CMH meeting, and I want to congratulate the staff there. They've done an excellent job on a number of things. You'll have before you tonight in the agenda, something that I think several commissioners here who have talked more broadly about wanting to take more things in-house, having county-owned assets and resources. Please do take note of the housing we're purchasing for CMH endeavors. I, I think it's laudable, and I also just want to say, at the last CMH meeting, there was a lot of there was a lot of genuine joy in the reversal of the picture that CMH and the Board of Commissioners had in the summer and fall of 2019 in relation to the financial position and candidly in relation to understanding of each other. And so I would just impart on all of you, we've just made some really tremendous progress, and it's not lost on me that last night, the CMH millage passed within more than two to one margin, which is an improvement on 2017, which I think also is a credit to the staff, and hopefully I've talked long enough that Administrator Dill can whisper in our chair's ear. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Perfectly timed. Anybody else have a liaison report? You have a liaison report? Commissioner Scott? Okay. All right. Anybody else have one? Nope. All right. I'll give a brief one from Board of Health. Had a great Board of Health meeting. Talked about a wide range of topics. Yep. All right, we're going to keep it going. We have a few special orders of business. The first one is a public hearing on the adoption of Brownfield plan for three ten through three twelve East Huron and Arbor. All right, so let me tell you again, in case you haven't heard this before, a public hearing is sort of like giving public comment, except you have to keep your comments limited to the topic of the public hearing. If you deviate from the topic of the public hearing, then I will gavel you, and then everybody will be upset. So please don't do that. Just keep, if you're going to give public comment during public hearing, just keep it focused on the topic of the public hearing, which is that Brownfield plan. Anybody want to, I'm open to public hearing. It's open. Anybody want to give comment? You get three minutes. Does anybody online want to participate in the public hearing?
There is no one online, Chair.
All right. Close the public hearing. Now, we, I would like a motion to set a public hearing on the 2025-2028 budget reaffirmation. Is there a second? All right, any discussion? All right, well, let's hit this one with a roll call vote.
Sorry, Commissioner Beeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So do it. You don't usually say it, say it.
Motion pass.
Boom, excellent. All right, we have another one. A resolution to set a public hearing on the proposed 2024 millage rate. Look for somebody to move that. Is there a second?
Four.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Nice, all right. Tune in next meeting for two public hearings, which you can participate in as long as you keep your comments focused to the topic of the public hearing, which there are two. All right, we have no appointments today. Moving into the consent agenda, I believe we are going to get a report from our clerk before that, while that is being prepared. I would say that in our communications, we did, we received two communications. One of them, we went ahead and marked as received, which is the notice of intent to plan from Manchester Township. They're planning communication to us. The second one was one we decided to receive but not acknowledge. It's another one from Livingston County opposing Michigan Senate bills eight seven five, eight seven six, eight seven seven, decided we should say we received it but not acknowledging it, Livingston County. Yep, okay. Yes, look for somebody who can send agenda.
So moved.
Okay, now we're going to do discussion on it, and for the discussion, we would like to have Clerk Castor Baum zoom in. You're going to zoom in now. Join us via Zoom. We're going to bring him in. It's is this happening?
Chair, he has not joined the meeting yet, but once he does, I will let you know.
Okay, well, it is not happening at this time. Well, because he might have any other items under the consent agenda they'd like to discuss while we wait for the clerk to join us. Commissioner White, what you got?
Well, I was able to let the Commissioners in Livingston know that they can proudly and gladly keep our names out of their mouths with their resolution.
All right.
And well-received.
Well-received. Do we have Clerk Castor Baum yet?
No, Chair, we do not.
Okay, well, we would, we'll come back to that later. We're going to come back, we're going to throw him under a report from the Administrator or the Chair. All in favor of approval, the consent agenda, say aye. Any opposed? None? All right, consent agenda pass. Moving on. First reading, would somebody like to move the first reading items? Commissioner Labar.
Thanks, Chair. Under resolutions, first reading, A, resolution ratifying the signature of the Administrator for the DOJ grant. Under B, resolution ratifying the signature of the County Administrator on the Upholding the Rule of Law and Preventing Wrongful Convictions Grant from DOJ. C, a resolution ratifying the application submission of DOJ Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. D, a resolution ratifying application acceptance of the U.S. Department of Justice COPS Community Grant. E, a resolution to approve the amended home ARP allocation plan. F, a resolution adopting the thirty, excuse me, the three hundred through three twelve East Huron Street Brownfield Plan in Ann Arbor. G, last item under first reading, a resolution to accept the U.S. Department of Energy Sustainable Energy Resources grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, or anybody want to pull any of these for separate consideration? Nope, any discussion on them as a set? Okay, Commissioner Sanders.
My discussion isn't as a set, but I just wanted to
Or does any of them?
I've, I've discussed this prior to this meeting, but I just wanted to put it on the record that I have asked that the the grant addressing the violence against women, that that position not be co-opted to do anything else in that office other than focus specifically on violence against women. So I'm going to put it on record the same way I did earlier. This is personal for me, and I want to make sure that that position is dedicated specifically and only to women that have experienced domestic violence, and that that position not be co-opted to do anything else in that office, not to be pulled away for anything else. That's that primary responsibility of that grant, and that's what I'm expecting that will occur.
I appreciate you sharing that. Administrator Dill has a response.
Yeah, Commissioners, I've had that conversation with our prosecutor, and he's assured me verbally that that position, those resources will be focused on, on that work. And if you guys like, we can get something more, we'll get something in writing if you, if you like.
Excellent. Anybody else? Commissioner Robbie.
This is sort of a blanket question for the items on our agenda today that relate to the Sheriff's Office, but what, how does it work in terms of these grants when there's a new administration coming in? If the applications have staff names on them, that, like, when there's a transition, how does that work? As context.
I don't have an
I don't have an answer for you tonight. I will have one for you tomorrow. I, I, what we've done, I believe, in years past, is obviously it's been, what, sixteen years since we've gone through this with the Sheriff's Office, but I think there's a, a transition, the, the transition happens seamlessly. We'll, we'll try to make sure that we can
I guess I just, I does, is that something that administration oversees, or is that something the Sheriff's Office oversees? I guess I just, I does, is that something that administration oversees, or is that something the Sheriff's Office oversees, or how does? I guess it's, yeah, been a while since that transition has happened, but I'd like to have a firm plan in place.
Yeah, I don't have an answer. This evening, we will certainly have an answer for you tomorrow sometime.
Commissioner Sanders?
I can't say for certain, but I would just add a follow-up that I would imagine that it would be the responsibility of the person that submitted that grant to go back to the grantor and make an amendment to their application that provides, you know, a change, and if, if you were the one that was named and you're no longer in that position, then they would do an application or an amendment to identify who would take your place.
Just one more add, I can't remember many of those grant applications that have, has the sheriff's name on it. I could certainly, I could be wrong in that, and I will find out for certain tomorrow, but I don't think the sheriff's name is included on any of those grant applications. Either way, we'll get an answer for the board tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Questions? Discussion? Anything? Commissioner Robbie?
I just want to double-check, I was texting with Nathan earlier today, but the Brownfield is all environmental capture, correct? Shaking your heads. And just to make sure I understand this, the the bullet point that says would capture approximately 65,000 of operating incremental tax revenues, that's the amount over the life of the Brownfield that would be captured of county?
They're nodding in the affirmative.
I see them, yeah, thank you.
Well, for everyone else.
They're affirming that they're nodding in the affirmative for the viewing public.
Right.
And then, okay, so those are my two questions, just wanted to double-check that, thank you.
Well, I didn't even have to come to the podium for that.
No, the head nodding worked, worked. So they're nodding again.
The affirmative. Okay, anybody else? Well then, it's a voice vote, all in favor of approving the first reading items, say aye. Any opposed? All right. All right, now I'd look for somebody to move the final readings, single reading, and approval claims.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. I'd like to move to A, Resolution to Authorize Exceeding the $10,000 Maintenance Limit on the Four Mile Lake Level District for Repairs from the Water Resources, Commissioner. B, A Resolution to Authorize Exceeding the $10,000 Maintenance Limit on the Iron Lake Level District for Repairs from the Water Resources, Commissioner. C, A Resolution Ratifying the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Southeast Michigan Resilience Fund Grant Application from the Water Resources, Commissioner. And we are onto the single readings, 3A, A Resolution Ratifying the Signature of the County Administrator on the Clean Sweep Grant from Public Works. B, A Resolution Authorizing the Signature of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners on the Emergency Management Work Agreement from the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. C, A Resolution Authorizing the County Administrator to Sign the Homeland Security Grant from the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. D, A Resolution to Authorize the Negotiation of a Purchase Agreement Contract for Two Currently Leased Residential Properties from Community Mental Health. E, A Resolution of Support for the Michigan Extended Producer Responsibility, EPR, Policy from Public Works. F, A Resolution Authorizing the Chair of the Board to Sign the 2024 L-4029 Tax Rate Request from Finance. And for the Approval of Flames.
Is there a second? Excellent, thank you. Anyway, want to pull any of these for separate consideration? No. Any discussion, questions? Commissioner Robbie, quick on the draw there.
On the draw, I just wanted to draw out, not separating for, for separate consideration, but just speaking to the, now I'm not finding it on the agenda, but the item from Mental Health regarding the purchasing of the two homes. I just want to, I don't actually have a question on it, I just want to say, similar to what Commissioner LaBarre said, I'm very excited to see this. So, you know, I figured when, I feel like you guys hear a lot of questions from me, and you know, sometimes I push a little hard, but I also want to say nice things when I see great things come on the agenda, and this totally, I think, is a great proposal, something that fits in line with the direction that I'd like to see, you know, CMH going, so this is, this is wonderful, this is huge progress, and from everything that I've learned about this, it really would help to advance what we're doing. So let's keep looking at stuff like this and future opportunities as well. Thank you.
Very nice. Administrator Dill, what you got for us?
Yeah, just to layer on that a little bit, I do want to thank Nicole Phelps and her team, they afforded me the opportunity to go and have eyes on those properties. They're wonderful properties. Thank you so much for taking the time to do it. I wanted you guys to know that prior to us entering into a purchase agreement.
Thank you. Commissioner, are you done? Commissioner Robbie?
A separate item, but-
Yes, yeah, wrap it up. Do your whole thing?
It's an item E on the Extended Producer Responsibility Policy. I'm gonna vote yes, obviously I think this is good, this is something that we should be doing nationally. Definitely in our state, definitely in our community, to make sure that, you know, when people buy things, that there's an extended life that when those things are used up, that they can bring them back, that the producer is actually helping to bear the cost of recycling. The one thing I wanted to touch on, just from a procedural standpoint, is it mentions the Resilient Washtenaw Plan calling for an Extended Producer Responsibility, and this question sort of applies to a lot of the other environmental-related items on our agenda too, but I think it would have been nice to have this at least be presented to the Environmental Council for their awareness, since it does fit with the Resilient Washtenaw Plan, which they're sort of tasked with helping to quarterback, and since this, I think there would be a lot of synergy, and there would be a lot of excitement on the Environmental Council. I'm not really suggesting it as an additional hurdle to jump through, but just, I do think that this is, since we have these systems and processes and citizen-appointed bodies in place, I think getting their feedback on this type of thing, similar to what Public Health did when they came forward with the the fee changes, and, you know, they presented it to the Environmental Council, they got feedback. It would have been nice, I think, to have this be follow that similar process, so.
Okay, that's a helpful comment. Commissioner Scott and then Sanders.
Thank you Chair. I just want to call attention to item C on the agenda. This is the Resolution Authorizing the County Administrator to Sign the Homeland Security Grant from the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. I see Ben Penat and Lee Hathaway here tonight, who have worked very hard on getting this grant to us, soliciting a lot of people on that committee's opinions, trying very hard to get that and to get grants to come in. And I want you to understand, it's not an easy thing for them, because the priorities for the Homeland Security Grant always seem to be sort of ever-changing and shifting, and so just when we think we have something figured out, there's new rules that pop up, like in 2023, I guess, yeah, they, they said, oh, there's a new priority, and it's election security. I mean, I'm glad they said it, but it just changed things, so these guys are really nimble on what they're doing, they're getting good programs and good things out into the community, and I just wanted to call attention to it, because I think it's something that can kind of just go by, where like, yes, approve it, do it, but I think it's been a yeoman's task to get this together, so I just want to add a note of appreciation for them.
And I know that has been, that along with some of the hazmat-related stuff has been really important to you, so it's great to that we're here with that.
Thanks.
Yep, you're in the queue for round two now. Okay, Commissioner Sanders?
I just wanted to acknowledge CMH and say thank you, because clearly it is possible for the county to purchase property, something that I've been inquiring about since first day on the job. But also, I would be interested in knowing at some date in the future what our cost savings might look like owning the property as opposed to leasing. Even if there isn't one, I'd be interested in knowing that it might be case study for future purchases. Thank you for that.
Purchases, we like it. Anybody that hasn't spoke yet, want to speak before I move us on to round two? Round two, Commissioner Robbie?
Do your gong thing, no. Round two. On the same topic, topic that Commissioner Scott was asking about, I'm noting in the agenda that it does say that we're expecting a reduction in federal funds for the Emergency Management Grant. Have we, are we budgeted for that, because we have to make up the difference, I guess?
We can probably expect a lot of reduction in federal funds, unfortunately.
Well, it sounds like this is something we're expecting now, even despite the result of the federal election, but just wondering what the impact of that's gonna look like, and we want to make sure to-
So I'll address that to the best of my ability, and basically, I think we're kind of looking at that as a long game, and maybe deferring a little bit to the future with some of the activities currently under our advisement, and so I guess I would kind of leave it at that, but we have a lot of project activity coming forward that is planned for subsequent years, and the grants are helping sustain some of that. But I would defer to the incoming administration, I suppose, to really answer what that funding looks like for continuation of the position. I don't know, I haven't had those conversations specifically, so I don't know what the support looks like. But certainly, yes, a 50% reduction in that grant is expected, taking the reimbursement from the feds down to like $15,000, so it's next to nothing, unfortunately. That's the stance on a lot of federal preparedness grants right now. Commissioner Scott, to your point earlier, with Homeland Security Grant, that's seen reduction on a continuing basis annually for a number of years now. So, we'll see what holds in store for 2025 and beyond with the new incoming administration nationally, and hope for the best there, but we'll certainly be looking for additional support, either for our administration, administration or the board.
Just so that I'm clear on the this, thank you, by the way, for that explanation, but, so the total cost here is 96,905 times two, basically?
I think the projected cost for the annual allocation is like 160,151.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, with benefits and everything.
Because we're applying for like half the money, basically, from the federal, and we're expecting to receive a fraction of that, basically.
The grant stipulates that we can receive up to 50% of the funding dedicated to that position, but the reality is it'll be $15,000 for their bills.
Got it, so basically this, this item here that says federal funds up to 96,905, that's what we can ask for, but we're not expected to get that.
Correct.
And then we have to make up the difference, meaning that likely, so if I'm doing the math right, likely we'd be looking at about fif- 15,000 to 17,500 dollars in additional, because we're already paying for the remaining funds on that anyways, and based on my reading here, we're already not receiving the full 96,000, we're receiving, looks like somewhere around 35,000.
Can I clarify, you're on item B?
I'm not, yeah, yeah, exactly, different items, Sheriff's Office-type stuff, but but different item, Emergency Management, not the, no, not Homeland Security, Emergency Management, yeah. So, just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
You're reading it correct, yeah. Prior years were about 30,000 plus, and then we're taking a proposed 50% cut this year, bringing it down to that expected income of $15,000.
So are we ready to, I mean, it's $15,000 structurally, I assume, so we ready to eat that, or?
Well, as these as, as these things surface, we will absolutely bring it back to you guys to, to let you know how we plan to, or we're recommending that we move forward, whether it's through the Administrator's authority or back to the board for additional funding. I do want to get the new sheriff on board, we've been talking with the sheriff about the onboarding process, and those are the kinds of things we want to illuminate out of the gate with her and her, and her team, so we'll, we'll keep the board posted.
The primary motivation for asking, and thank you for answering all the questions, but the, for the board, the primary motivation for me asking is I'd rather not create a whole bank of commitments that then the new administration has to parse through the financial necessities of, so to the greatest degree that we can make sure that we're not committing people or committing the department to things that are going to be problems for the new administration to solve. Let's try to solve them now if we can, so.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for answering other questions. Do we have any other, Commissioner Light?
Just for clarity, as I was reading, I just wanted to know, is this, have we always funded for the Emergency Management Agreement? Have we always done this, and if so? So that's, that's the first question, and then instead of it being structurally, can they just take that from the fund balance or their reserve to make up whatever that difference is, because, I mean, we, we don't, we don't have it.
Those, those are all questions, great questions, and, and we will bring you guys back a recommendation or a proposal on how we, how we move forward. You know, fund balance exists for those kinds of things, and that could be an opportunity, that certainly is an opportunity for us to leverage those dollars.
All right, anybody else? Commissioner Robbie?
Just, just a point of clarity, my understanding is with the MOU expiring on January 1st, that there won't really be a fund balance anymore in the Sheriff's Office, right?
There is currently a, a fund balance in the Sheriff's Office. When the MOU is addressed, we'll have to determine where those dollars, where those funds sit.
Did you, were you raising your hand, Commissioner Sanders?
I, I just had a question, so if Commissioner Light is asking if it can be covered by the Sheriff's Department, are we still voting on this?
Yes, we have to vote to accept that, to move it forward, but the question is there will be likely a funding gap, and so in the future, how will we handle the funding gap? Anybody, Commissioner Scott?
I just want to know, I feel like this is, these are the questions we're going to have to be prepared for going forward. And this, this is probably why everyone at this table and people who work at, like around this table, was up a little bit late last night and felt a little like we're walking, I explained to somebody, like, like we're walking on a bog. I don't know how many of you have walked on a bog, my family's Irish, I've walked on a bog. It's, it's kind of, but it's not steady, and that's where we are, that's where we're gonna be, so I think thinking about all of these things and being very cautious is what, what we're up against, like it or not.
We'll have to jump over a moat to get on.
Yes. Yeah.
We're bogging it, all right. You got some?
Just to layer on that, you know, a lot of conversations leading up to the election, and certainly we spent the latter part of the morning today talking about these kinds of things. More to come. I, I, I expect, like any major change like this, that we will be engaged in conversation with the board around these items in between Board of Commissioner meetings, likely through a formal memo or, or some other form of communication. But, you know, certainly through the end of the year, and, and through that time period by which we onboard the Sheriff's Office, we have to make sure that these kinds of things have a solid strategy around them.
I am confident that we will be able to do that while we're here. All right, anybody else? Okay, Ashley, we will do a roll call vote.
Commissioner LaBarre. Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right. Moving along. Report for the County Administrator.
Thank you Chair. Good evening again, Commissioners, just a couple of items, beginning with, we now have our-
Beginning with, we now have our clerk on the line and would like for him to give us an update on last night, last night's election results.
Good evening. Um, the, uh, we had, uh, we had quite an election, uh, yesterday. Um, and the, uh, period leading up to it, uh, was also a very intense nine days of early voting. Uh, administratively, you know, on the whole, uh, the election went, went smoothly. Uh, the biggest issue that we had was that the, um, in, in our, in the city of Ann Arbor, the chief deputy. Uh, city clerk was, uh, uh, unexpectedly on medical leave and a lot of tasks. That, that that person had been assigned to do fell to other people or were delayed one way or another. Um, excuse me. Um, and that is, that's, I think, the, one of the, the main reason why. Uh, we weren't, we weren't finished with, uh, with tabulating all the votes on the, on the website until 4:12 AM this morning. Uh, and I didn't get out of the office until 5:30 AM because we had to wait for that material. Um, we had, uh, roughly 51,000 votes, uh, early voting. Uh, we had, um. You know, about the same number, a little more than that, uh, for, uh, absentees. Um, ju- ju- just to, uh, uh, to, to review how that, how that, that works, the, the, the mandate for the nine days of early voting falls primarily on the, uh, on the locals, on the cities and townships. Uh, in the 27 cities and townships in Washtenaw County, and of those, four of them, uh, uh. Ann Arbor City, Ypsilanti Township, Bridgewater Township and the city of Myland chose to do early voting on their own. Uh, the other 23 jurisdictions, uh, uh, other 23 cities and townships, uh, basically worked with, with my office, with the county. Uh, to have consolidated county run sites at, uh, uh, I, I'd say a considerable cost savings of what, over what, what it. What it would have been had they all done this individually. And the way that this is done in different counties has really varied, like for example. Uh, in Genesee County, every jurisdiction had its own early voting site. Uh, in Santa Leck County, which is a little further east from there, uh, there was one county operated, uh, uh, early voting site at the county seat for the entire county. So the, uh, there's a wide variety of different solutions that were worked out in different places. Um, we had, we were apprehensive about security challenges, uh, over this election, including, uh, uh, and we, we have been. Preparing through workshops and other kinds of training. So with the help of the State Bureau of Elections and with federal agencies. Uh, to, uh, to develop strategies for dealing with those kinds of security issues. Uh, we did, really did not experience anything like that. I understand that in some other areas, um, uh, particularly outside Michigan, there were. Uh, bomb threats, which apparently originated in Russia. Um, and there were, uh. Uh, you know, other kinds of, you've probably heard about the kinds of, anyway, none of those things happened here. Uh, we had a, 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 a smooth election, a smooth nine days of early voting. Uh, and, uh, the, the issue with early voting at first was we had such a large turnout, such an unexpectedly large utilization of early voting. That, uh, kept keeping up with supplies, keeping up with toner cartridges, because the early votes were basically primarily ballot on demand. Meaning you come in and you, you, you check in and they say, oh, you're in precinct 17 and they generate a ballot for precinct 17 and give it to you. Uh, but that requires having the printer, having the toner cartridge and so forth all in place. Uh, the alternative being to have pre-printed ballots, uh, and the, the, for each of these, these, uh, these, these early voting sites. There were a lot of precincts, uh, that would, you would have to have ballots for. Uh, we, uh, you know, a limited number in, in, in the county sites. Um, uh. Absentee ballots, like I said, the absentee ballot, uh, counting board in Ann Arbor was what took us until 4:12 AM. Uh, and again, really dealing with issues of, of, uh, you know, the situation in Ann Arbor with there being down a key staff member. Um, the, there was a special, um, uh, city of Ann Arbor had a special dispensation for handling. Uh, uh, those people, again, primarily U of M students who registered to vote on election day. Uh, which was not as big of a group as it, as it had been in some of the past elections. Uh, those who vote, who registered to vote on election day, the, the, the usual process is that they would get an absentee ballot. They would vote the absentee ballot, put it in the envelope and submit it as an absentee ballot with a signature on the outside. Uh, Ann Arbor, uh, uh, just for election day registrants, uh, in the city. Uh, we're, we're able to, instead of doing an absentee ballot, which is labor intensive to, uh, to process. Were able to basically feed the tabulator, feed a ballot directly into the tabulator. Uh, and saving a tremendous amount of, of, of effort that way. Uh, and we thought it would, it would, we would not, we would end up not having the, uh, uh, the Ann Arbor absentee counting board going all night. Uh, but in, in the end, there were, there were other issues. Um, the, uh, I don't think I have to go, uh, uh, detail all the, uh, the, the election results. Congratulations on all nine commissioners being reelected. Uh, so we, our board for next year will look a lot like the board for this year. Uh, as, as I'm sure you all know that, uh, I, I was reelected, as was Ali Savitt, the prosecuting attorney and, uh. Uh, and we will have a new sheriff, Alicia Dyer, uh, and, uh, Latisha Sharp for, uh, for treasurer and Gretchen Driscoll for Water Resources Commissioner. Uh, our, uh, our new circuit court judge will be Janan Ham- Hamood. And Carol Kunki, Darlene O'Brien and Cedric Simpson, uh, were to their respective, uh, judicial positions were all, uh, uh, reelected. Uh, unopposed and Corinne Moore will take, uh, uh, one, a contested race for the 15th district, uh, court position. Um, we had, uh, 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 contests going on in, in, in several of the townships around the county. Uh, Lowdy Township was one that has been, was closely watched. Uh, the, uh, officials in Lowdy Township, including Jan Godak, the supervisor, uh, were, were reelected, but the, um. Uh, but, but three out of four on their, uh, among their township trustees will now be Democrats. Um, in Pittsfield Township, there wasn't a contest, but the, the new supervisor in Pittsfield Township will be Trish Riley from. Who has been working for a number of years in my office. So congratulations to her. Uh, in Webster Township, um, somewhat similar to what happened four years ago in Dexter Township. Uh, uh, you know, again, a long time Republican township now has a, a group of, of, of mostly Democratic officials. Um, the four countywide, uh, uh, tax proposals all passed easily. Uh, and the, uh, uh, in general, most of the proposals around the county. Uh, of different, uh, you know, school proposals, uh, township and city proposals, in general, they passed, uh, the, um. Uh, one exception or two exceptions were proposals C and D that were charter amendments, initiated charter amendments in the city of Ann Arbor. Those both lost and they, they, uh, not only lost, they lost every precinct, which I was, um, quite surprised by. Um, but the, um, as far as, as far as the, uh. Um. You know, so anyway, I think we had a, a, a successful election. We had very similar, uh, uh, level of turnout to four years ago. Uh, we had 223,000, uh, uh, um, you know, votes cast in the, in the county. Uh, uh, similar to four years ago and the, uh, and the results in the presidential race. Uh, uh, you know, if you just compare them side by side, they were extremely similar in, uh, in, in 2020. Uh, uh, Washtenaw County voted, uh, for, uh, uh, Joe Biden over Donald Trump by, by just over 100,000 vote margin. Uh, and this year, uh, it was, uh, um, uh, Kamala Harris over Donald Trump by just under 100,000 vote margin. Uh, the, uh, A- A- Ann Arbor News or MLive is making a deal of, uh, the increase in the vote for, uh, for, uh, for the Republican. But it was again, come in comparative terms, it was only a small amount. Um, questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Very thorough as always, friends. Do we have any questions or comments? Is this a question? No, no. Commissioner Sanders? No, no. Okay. Well, we do have one. Commissioner Robbie.
So the quick, uh, comment question that I have is, um, relating to the, your comment about. The same day voter registration that occurred this year compared to last year. And obviously I have. You know, I was at the satellite locations with the students and the very long lines that waited, you know, I, I think I drove the last person home. At the Deuterstadt Center at like 2:30 AM, uh, cause the buses had stopped running, but. This year I went to all those same locations and there was no line at all, uh, at eight o'clock. So. I'm wondering, is that as a result of the early voting, that you think that people are availing themselves of that option? Or is it that I know that one of the issues was the clerk's office, um, didn't have enough computers to like manage the load? And I know the Secretary of State about halfway through the night had set up several, uh, you know, further laptops. So I'm sort of wondering whether we prepared, uh, overprepared this time or, or prepared enough? Uh, or if it was just that there were less people same day registering?
Yeah, I, I think that fundamentally there were less people and the process was faster. Um, and, uh, early voting obviously took a lot of pressure off of election day. Uh, you know, we had, you know, s- some 51,000 people voting by early voting. Uh, and we had a great many, uh, uh, you know, absentee ballots, the, uh, um. You, you know, historically, the, the number of, uh, the number of, the proportion of people voting by absentee ballot has been increasing from election to election for quite some time. Obviously it peaked in 2020 during, during the pandemic, but it has not gone back to what it was, uh, uh, in a, uh, uh. Anything like the, the numbers we had before the pandemic. Uh, so we had a substantial number of, of absentee ballots and. There was three streams, you know, the, the early votes, the absentee votes and the election day votes, they each have their own personality. We've, you know, uh, and the, uh. For example, in the presidential primary, the early votes were carried by Nikki Haley, the other two were not in the Republican presidential primary. Um, the, in, in, in this election, the early votes were, were noticeably, uh, uh, more Republican, uh, than the other two. And the, um, uh, absentee ballots were more Democratic. That, so there was, uh, obviously some partisan difference in terms of the people who are. Who are m- making use of those different, uh, options. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Scott?
Um, Clerk Kessim, um, I just want to, um, tell you, thank you also for your earlier presentation to us about election. And why elections are extra safe here in Washtenaw County in Michigan. I've quoted you directly to several people. When they asked about how secure things were and your assurances based on the fact that we still have the paper ballots. But I just want to let you know that what you said to us, we, that I amplified to people around the state. And so, um, I want to thank you for your work. You must be exhausted. So thank you for being here and, um, thanks for reassuring us ahead of time as well.
Yeah. And, and thank you all for agreeing to reduce the, uh, the length of the titles on the four county proposals. Uh, you know, we had to struggle to fit all of the candidates and all of the issues. Uh, that we have in the county and every, in 120 different precincts to fit them all on two sides of one piece of paper. We did manage to do that. Had, had the, uh, original title still been there, we, we probably would not have been able to do that. Uh, it was really a very close thing. We had one, in one case, a, um, a, a, a candidate for one of the state education boards. Uh, there, they, he decided he really wanted to have the third after his name. And that his, his full name with the third after it didn't fit on one line. And so again, that pushed everything else down. Again, we had to, uh, uh, you know, had more footwork to do to try to, again, make it all fit and we did. So, uh, I, I really appreciate the, the work of certainly of my staff, uh, on, uh, working out all those ballot details and programming. Um, and the number of precincts in the county, I should say, you know, last time we had 150 precincts. This time we have only 120. And the reason for that is that the, uh, the legislature has raised. The, the, uh, the limit on the number of voters per precinct from 2,999 to 5,000. And a number of the jurisdictions around the county have taken advantage of this, uh, by reducing the number of precincts. The theory being that with early voting, with, with, with large usage of absentee voting, we don't need as many polling places. Uh, uh, we don't need as much polling place capacity as we have had in the past. And, uh, I would say that the, our experience this time, uh, um, uh, validates that, that, uh. That, that idea. And, uh, again, congratulations to all of you.
I'm just following up saying that I just noted, um, with a certain amount of joy about the ballot being two pages. And so, uh, just front and back, I mean, by two pages, a single page. So, so your work there was noted and I'm, I'm also glad we got rid of the extra text as well. And, um, also want to tell you, congratulations. Um, thank you for congratulating us, but, uh, congratulations also due to you. Thanks.
Well, thank you.
Clerk Kessim, before you depart, I do want to remind this body, uh, it was raised at, uh, a prior meeting. What were, what were our plans for security around the, the election infrastructure? Just want to thank you and your team and the team here in administration for the work that we did. For some of you, well, you, you may, you likely don't know that this suite was a backup, uh, location. So I do want to thank, uh, Jeff and Jason and the team here in administration. And the team in the clerk's office for, for the collaboration around this. It was in, from my perspective, and I talked to the city administrator a couple of times Tuesday evening. Things went very, very well in Washtenaw County.
Yes.
All right, everybody up? All right. Well, thank you, clerk, and congratulations to you. Looking forward to working with you for another four years here.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you, commissioners. We have one, we have one other short presentation includes two items. One, uh, we had talked about vacant positions. We have an update on that. And, and we also have, a- as you know, we have talked a lot about the engagement survey and having an action plan around some of the. The information that we gathered around the survey. We start unpacking that tomorrow morning. I want to thank Guillermo. And Crystal for arranging that. I will be talking to a group of county employees at 8:30 tomorrow, right? 8:30 in the morning. Guillermo?
Thank you. Thank you, administrator. So just please give me one second while we have the presentation on screen. Just to make sure that we are all watching the same information. Thank you, Ashley. So, yes, um, good evening commissioners. As, uh, Administrator Deal mentioned, I have a brief presentation on the status of our vacant positions. In the next slide, please. This is a pareto of all of our vacant positions that are not on hold. We currently, well, sorry, not, I shouldn't say currently, as of November the first, we had 195 vacant positions not on hold. This is the pareto of the distribution of these vacant positions by department. Something important to mention is that the tenure of this 195 positions goes from 17 days to 6.9 years. Because of that, uh, Administrator Deal and myself, we are working on analyzing. Why are these positions being vacant for so long? And we will collaborate with department heads to make sure that the manage of these resources are effectively managed. So, uh, the intention is to have less positions open, uh, for, for long periods of time. In the next slide, please, this is a pareto of, uh, the vacant positions, but these ones are on hold. So these positions are not, uh, funded. We currently have 72 positions in the organization. So before I move to the next topic, which is a follow-up on the engagement survey, I would like to pause here to see if you have any questions on our positions.
Commissioner Scott?
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair. If you go back to the slide before, uh, the, of those vacant positions not on hold, that's what I wanted to see. So if you say at the sheriff's office, I have 66 vacant positions and then go forward a slide. Plus 25 fold vacant.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that complete, your?
That's the extent of my question. I just wanted to have like an idea of really like what's the full scope?
Yeah. Commissioner Scott, you, you and I had a conversation around what, what I refer to as an aged vacancy report. And, and important to note, uh, uh, executive director. And, and important to note, uh, Executive Director Herman Hernandez talked about, some of those positions have been vacant for over six years, so getting something back to you all with some recommendations, I think is important.
Yes, Commissioner Sanders.
Just clarity on which, which of these slides actually indicates that the position is vacant? But they continue to keep it in their budget.
It is the not on hold, this one.
Not on hold, so sixty-six positions that are budgeted for in the sheriff's department.
Correct.
But not filled.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Scott, round two.
Thank you, yeah, I, I think that, you know, there's probably a number of issues that go into that, like, like why peo- why positions are not filled? But it is interesting to look at this and then maybe have an idea of the kind of length of time, the how, like, are these crusty old positions? Or are they fresh? Um, and so some of that, I think, might be interesting. And additionally, I think that this idea of the vacant positions not on hold also intersects with some of the issues that uh, I know Administrator Dylan and I have been having with some union leadership about um, retirees coming in and doing this work. So I'd be interested also to kind of correlate some of those vacant positions not on hold with are there retirees doing that position as a temporary work as well? So in lots of ways to dig into the data, I've demonstrated to you all tonight, um, my, my nerdy core, and that's just another one. But I think it's telling us a, a interesting story if we can kind of dig into some of that a little bit more. But this is exactly the type of thing that I've been looking for and um, I can't wait to keep going on, thanks.
Thank you Commissioner.
All right.
If there are no other questions on our vacant positions, I want to give you an update on the um, next steps for our um, engagement survey. So in the next slide, please, as you may recall from our, my last presentation on the engagement survey, our lowest rated question was survey follow-up. So we um, we think that that topic will organically improve as a result of all the action plans that the department heads are working on. Department heads are directly working with their team members to understand the results, to understand what are they looking for in this organization as an employer, and they are creating actions to improve those uh, results. So that topic, we are confident that will organically improve after uh, employees see uh, actions of their concerns. The second lowest rated question was um, trust in leadership. So the question was, I have confidence in senior leadership to make the right decisions for this organization. This question was, oh, sorry, received thirty-nine percent of favorable responses, twenty-six percent percent of neutral responses and thirty-five percent of um, negative um, responses. So in the next slide, please, that's why the administration uh, leadership team decided to focus on this topic to make action plans to improve the perception of our employees. So we analyzed the responses of other questions in the survey to identify the possible barriers to trust in this organization. And we identified these key barriers that may be affecting the trust in leadership, which are lack of communication, inconsistent behavior, lack of transparency, micromanagement or resolved conflicts, uh, perceived lack of integrity and inequity and unfairness in our operations. After we conducted this analysis and understanding a little bit more the feedback that our employees gave us, in the next slide, please. Um, the administration decided to uh, start this initiative called uh, working hours with administrator as Administrator uh, Dill just mentioned. This will start tomorrow with some visits that Administrator Dill would conduct to other locations in our organizations. And on top of that, um, Administrator Dill will hold uh, working sessions every quarter at the LRC. For these uh, working sessions, we will invite from twenty-five to thirty um, uh, random employees from the entire organization to talk about anything employees want to talk about. If they have questions about our processes, policies, procedures, decisions that have been made in, in, in administration, they will be free to ask those directly to our administrator. There won't be any participation from HR or anybody else in administration in, in this um, in this uh, sessions to keep uh, transparency and to keep the, the direct um, um, networking. Of course, uh, Administrator Dill will be joined by somebody, someone on his team to have like um, um, agenda or to keep track of the, of the uh, open issues. For these open issues that may happen during the, the, the sessions that may require a follow-up, we will conduct this communication in the monthly quarterly communications that um, uh, Administrator Dill um, release to, to all of the, the, the workforce. The aim of this initiative is of course to improve engagement. Um, employees who trust their leadership are more likely to be engaged in organizations, they are more likely to be motivated and committed to their work. We are also um, aiming to improve the dialogue uh, from administration to employees. We want to reduce rumors or misunderstanding in the organization, which will bring us confidence during transitions, will create a positive work environment, and of course, it will improve the leadership accountability and continuous improvement in the organization. So we are confident that this uh, initiative will improve the perception of our employees. And uh, this will help us to address their concerns effectively and directly. So this concludes my presentation, I don't know if you have any questions.
Commissioner Dill.
Yeah, the only thing that I, that I would add is that we will report back to you all, uh, you know, kind of our, you know, how this engagement uh, strategy works and, and some of our findings, so we wanna make sure that we're intentional about leaning into the concerns that we have heard throughout the organization. Uh, so we will, we'll see how this goes and we will certainly report back at our first opportunity.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very excited, oh, you, you have a question here, sure, go ahead. Commissioner Robbie.
I think I'm unfortunately gonna, you're, I know you're trying to end before Commissioner Sanders, but.
No, no, we've already passed that point, it, it was never a goal, it was never a goal.
Oh my God, you were so close though, so close, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you this one.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you this one, you did good.
Thanks buddy.
Uh, my question is um, regarding the courts, what was the final verdict on that? What's the final verdict on the courts? Unintended, you know.
Right, um, we held uh, meetings with both, both courts, uh, and we will provide more information for the next survey, which will happen in twenty twenty-five. And we, the invitation is still open for them to participate in the next uh, in the next survey.
So they're not doing it.
Well, the next survey will happen in the second half of twenty twenty-five, um, so they are still invited to participate.
What's the, all right, now we got a whole bunch of hands, all right, Commissioner Robbie, are you, yeah, are you?
Or are you asking for this initiative?
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is, this is an invitation for all county employees, so uh, court employees will be invited to attend these meetings as well.
No, I'm sorry, I was asking about the, the survey and whether it was ultimately sent to court employees or not.
No.
It was not sent to court employees and where, anyways, I'll stop talking.
Okay, then you've opened the can, all right, so Commissioners Sanders, Scott and Light, in that order.
I'll take it if you want, cause it's on like.
Okay, Commissioner Scott.
Usually I would defer, but I'm, I just wanna be um, really clear. Uh, are you saying you have not gotten a commitment from the courts that they will participate in the next round?
Correct.
But am I correct in remembering that their uh, hesitation in com- to completing that this time was because they felt it came up too fast?
Correct.
To clarify, is that the circuit court and the district court or has, has one court?
That's district and trial court? Okay, understood, thanks.
All right, go ahead Commissioner Sanders.
So my follow-up is, I thought my understanding was, is that the trial court indicated that they would participate, but after they completed some sort of state mandatory uh, evaluation that wasn't related to us. And then they would, they were in agreement that they would distribute to their staff.
They didn't commit to participate in the survey. What the court, the trial court administrator told me is that um, the chief judge and, and the administrator, they are addressing the employees' concerns themselves, not through the survey uh, with different initiatives, but they didn't commit to participate in our last uh, survey.
Okay, so just, just for clarity for, um, so there is a, we uh, we were appropriately schooled on the difference between the district court and the trial court. Uh, and that they are not in unison together in terms of, but they, but neither even after our follow-up with them, have been interested in participating in a survey that would help us under- better understand, at least at the district court, why we were having so many complaints, not all of the commissioners, but some of us were having multiple complaints from staff who felt that they were being targeted and discriminated against.
That is correct, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner Light.
So, um, thank you so much for all that you do. And uh, I am sorry that you have to take, take this grief, however, um, I am requesting uh, that over in the friend of the court, that they are provided a mandatory survey, the staff, our Washtenaw County employees um, to be given, and I don't care what time of year it is, I don't care if it's December twenty-ninth and a half, that they are going to be required to participate in a survey. And if the administration over at the court does not agree, that's too bad. So either get with it or we will have some problems. So if that, however, that's taken, but that's what's gonna happen, they are gonna be required and mandated to participate in the survey, to distribute it. Now, the employees, if they want to take it, fine, but if not, but they, they need to be required to distribute. And that's not a, a ask, it's, it's required.
Commissioners, I will communicate the desires of this body and uh, you know, I will, I will send you a draft of that communication because I wanna make sure that it is aligned with your expectations. And I wanna make sure that it is moved through corporation council. Uh, because I, I, at the end of the day, I wanna make sure that there is the appropriate teeth in our ask. So we will begin to author that communication tomorrow afternoon.
Commissioner Robbie.
So I'm super frustrated at this point, and I would say zooming out, there are things that I can't control and there are things that I can't control. And one of the things that I can control is how I vote at this table. And so I today am going to not vote on any issues that come before us that involve the trial or circuit court, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same, if the, if the item comes up, we have something that we just passed through first reading, it's just a grant for fifty thousand dollars, I will be a no in two weeks. Um, or I will move to postpone the item until they can properly come back to us with an answer on this item. And if they're not gonna just, just send the email out to their employees, I'm gonna vote no on all their stuff, I'm done.
And that's gonna be two noes.
All right, so Commissioner Sanders.
So I just, uh, I appreciate um, Administrator Dill offering to come back to us uh, with teeth. Um, because that is, that is one of the, the, I won't say it's an area of contention. Uh, it is an area of concern that they, that the um, one, at least one of the courts has been adamant that they basically don't have to cooperate with us. Um, and that they're separate. The only problem that I have not been able to get really a definitive answer on is that those employees are still county employees. And I believe that we have a responsibility to make sure that all of our employees are, have a level playing field, and I just, I can't stand a bully. And I've said this repeatedly, no employee should have to come to work concerned um, about their ability to do their job and receive the resources that they need in order to do their job over what could be perceived to be some sort of power play. Um, and we, I think, as elected commissioners for Washtenaw County, have a responsibility to make sure that all of the county staff are not bullied, are treated fairly and have equal access um, to human resources and, and any other um, assets that come with having a job with the county, and it shouldn't matter. I, I, I do understand that there is a reason why um, there is a separation between uh, the courts, um, but that to me does not mean that they can mistreat um, or perceive that they can mistreat or do what they wanna do uh, with their staff, almost as though, I hate to say it, but this, this isn't a plantation, it's not a plantation. Um, and our employees shouldn't feel like they're working for an overseer that gets to decide whether or not they get whipped or not. So I'm interested in seeing what that teeth looks like, those options of the teeth look like. Not the tooth, but the teeth.
Noted commissioners, uh, I do want to say that we are continuing to have regular conversations with court leadership, and I think our, our discussions to this point have been cordial and represent the framework for progress. Uh, we will author the communication, as I've indicated, I will move through corp council because I wanna make sure that I stay within the boundaries of my authority uh, when sending said communication. So we will do that, uh, I will make sure that this body has an opportunity to review that communication in draft form uh, before it is then distributed to the courts.
All right, Commissioner Labarre and then Robbie and then Scott.
Make sure, um, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna try and uh, dissuade anyone from feeling anything they've already articulated uh, or to try and uh, convince anyone otherwise. I, I think Administrator Dill is being diplomatic in terms of what he's saying here. If we're serious about going down this path, um, we're, we're gonna need to authorize Greg to be able to do a lot more than just seek uh, corporation council input. And I just wanna be clear with, you know, all of you here now, um, I don't think what is happening is, is necessarily fair, and I think we are set up structurally to lose that challenge every time. And so I think we owe it to the staff to give them a more explicit mandate to sort of test some of these boundaries. And good, bad and different, um, I think we're gonna put them in an untenable position if we don't either explicitly grant that to them um, or give them the time and space to try to continue to work something out kinda, you know, offline. And I am genuinely not trying to lecture anyone or say do it this way. But I feel like if we don't take some sort of explicit action here, we're putting staff in a, in a completely lose-lose situation that I fear will ultimately exacerbate some of the feelings I've heard at this table that I completely understand. And I would echo Commissioner Sanders' sentiment, but you know, not wanting to essentially reward a bully uh, with, with, with sort of uh, being bullied. But if, if we're gonna go that route, I think we need to lean into giving staff the cover to actually do that. And I, I wonder if that would be maybe something we could uh, think about over the next two weeks to be ready, whatever we decide, so I'd just throw that out there, sure.
I think that's helpful and I think that we will have to have a discussion about that, uh, and then bring something out of a conversation in board leadership, so there's a response and for us to discuss at the next one, so we're not just always, you know, reacting, uh, Commissioner Robbie and then Scott.
Uh, thank you Chair, I was texting with Chief Judge Freshour during our dialogue and she confirmed with me via text message that um, they are committed to doing. and she confirmed with me via text message that um they are committed to doing the survey for 2025. So if that has not, if maybe there's another communication that needs to happen with you guys, but it sounds like from her perspective, they are completely on board to do it, and that it's so.
That was indeed my understanding as well.
Okay, thank you. So just wanted to make sure we were on the same page on that item and that this is limited to the trial court.
So maybe we can be half as angry.
Fifty percent anger.
Fifty percent, yeah. Commissioner Scott.
So I, I was gonna say, it's just that the person who was the author of the initial policy to do this, that the, I wanna just reiterate the fact that, and I know you know this, but at some point, the courts are gonna be listening to this too, and I would say this to them too, that the reason I penned that policy to begin with was to make sure that all the workers in the county were getting a chance to kind of have a voice in how they felt that their work was doing, and for the county to understand how engaged people were with the work. I also have a very clear understanding that, as Commissioner Bima says, we don't make widgets, we're government, and so we have a very limited pool with which we can pay people and offer people benefits. And an employee engagement survey is a way to look at what you could do to keep people engaged and other ways you can give people some employment satisfaction. And that was purely the impetus behind the policy that I wrote in 2021 about this. So not like this year, that like surprise everybody doing its quick. Um and so part of my frustration, which I've expressed before, is saying that this came up fast, whereas in fact, it came up in 2021, and that you still have to be aware of policy and law, even if you don't know about it, which I think any of the judges and any of the courts would tell any of us if we were before them on the bench. I'm sorry, you did not know that was the law, it's the law, right? Um I also wanna say that I understand keenly the, about the separation of powers. In fact, I can tell you um because it was on my AP history exam years ago when I was in high school, and it's James Madison and Federalist Fifty-One, where he talks about the accumulation of all powers in the same hands, maybe some tyranny, so I'm there. I know about the separation of powers. Um and I didn't go to law school, but I don't need a civics lesson. Um I know that they have power to run the courts. However, the flip side of that is that they've asked us on our end to take care of the employees through HR, a unified HR, and a, and a unify, and, and asking admin and labor relations to do the bargaining process with the unions. And so I think that there has to be some latitude in recognizing you have the ability to run the court and do things that you feel you need to do that are part of the judicial branch of government, and we're over here legislative, but we're not talking about the work you're doing in the courtroom, we're talking about the people that work in that courtroom. And we're not actually saying anything with this engagement survey of something you have to do with those people, we're saying, we just wanna hear their voices. And that's the key, that's, it's not punitive, we just wanna hear their voices, and we want to understand what they need at their work. So I think that that's the crux of it, and I, I get very frustrated about it because I think it is one hundred percent in 2021, when I was thinking about what was going on and people's lives at work, which were all put asunder after COVID, in the middle of COVID, what we could do to try to make things better. This is only an attempt to do that. And so I'm hopeful that we can come to a point where this doesn't seem like I'm trying to step on the judicial branch and tell them how to rule on cases, cuz I would never presume. I am just wanting to take care of the people that work for this county.
All right, Commissioner Light.
I am in agreeance. Um and I also uh I hate to keep beating a dead horse, but it has been a year and about twenty days since I have traveled to and from over at the friend of the court before I was kicked out. And our employees have been discriminated upon, have been mentally abused, and has been bullied. And so there's no coof about me, and I'm, clearly, we have not violated any policy, any laws, they have violated that by discriminating, bullying, and mentally abusing our employees. So I don't care about any teeth, any coof, we haven't broke any laws or any policies. Somebody better do something and do something soon. We have had employees that are no longer over at the friend of the court and not at will. And this has to stop. So all of the, we're just gonna be straight to the point. It has to stop, and it better stop, because they are putting the county at risk for lawsuits. We have to be frugal with our money now. We see what happened yesterday, so it will not be tolerated. We are not destabilizing or dismantling the courts. We are just fighting for the rights of the individuals that have went through all of these hardships for three-plus years. So I would like to put a motion on the floor to authorize the administrator to proceed with seeking counsel um from our corporate counsel or outside counsel, counsel as needed um to rectify this matter immediately.
Well, all right, discussion on it. I, I would ask Corporation Counsel, do we need a motion to do that? I mean, is that a thing that, like, is it? You feel, you feel like?
A formal motion is not required.
But we could do it.
You could do one, absolutely.
Sounds like it's, that's what's about to happen. Anybody, okay, so we're discussing this motion now. Uh you had a hand up earlier. You, I know it was before this happened, but did you still wanna say something?
Oh, are you talking to me or Andy?
To you, Commissioner Sanders.
Oh, um I, I just wanted to stick this part in, cuz I said this, you know, some time ago, I, when I, and I was transparent enough to say this to some of the administrators over at the court, it looks like union busting to me, and I don't like that look. Cuz the people that are being run out of their jobs are not administrative, they belong to a bargaining unit, and there's some um creative ways that it looks as though they are trying to eliminate people out of their jobs by not refunding programs that they've been funding for a while. Um and so that was one of the reasons that I was interested in seeing how many vacancies they have, because there's clearly some uh uh a little bit more than wiggle room in their budget. So I just wanna put that on the record. I, 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 I do not support union busting, and that's what it, to me, if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck.
Okay, um so we need some clarity. If, if I remember your words correctly, it was rectify this situation. We've gotta define what that means. Can you provide some clarity? I'm gonna go to Commissioner Labarre while I talk to Michelle here for a minute. Yeah, let's do that. If no one objects, we're gonna take a recess. Objection, recess.
Feel like this is punishment.
Thanks Chair. I think that was well said by Commissioner Scott. I guess the one thing I would say, I wish I had known and done a better job on when the transition took place from the term that ended at 2016 and began at 2017 and that I was here for and was chair for at the time was there is a tendency within any well-run organization to avoid or seek to avoid those things that they know are not likely to be allowed to proceed, primarily in dealing with state and federal regulation rule and in some cases interpretation of law. I wish what we'd done then and that I think this board and I'm glad that it's gonna be the nine of us, you know, Lord willing for a six-year period at least. I think we should think about ways in which we can proactively give staff license to kind of figure out where the holes and arguments are, where the boundaries are that we can gently approach and those that are really sort of third rail territory. I don't know where that's gonna come, none of us do, but issues like cooperation with ICE, issues related to immigration, issues related to social services. I think we need to be ready to direct staff to do things a little bit out of the ordinary procedure and have their back explicitly to say, we're asking for that because we are all playing defense now for at least two years. We're playing some form of it for at least four. So I wish in the past we'd put that posture in place at the beginning of the term rather than I think what sort of happened was we sort of developed it as we went. I don't know exactly how to do that, but in line with what you said Commissioner Hodge and you said Commissioner Scott, if we do that for the organization, I think we will best serve residents regardless of be they citizens, residents or something else, and I think best adhere to the values that I think the nine of us pretty clearly articulated and that this community last night, sort of in defiance of trends, also articulated by a wide margin. So I do not look forward to the waters we are about to traverse, but I'm glad you all are in the boat with us.
Thank you. Commissioner Beeman?
Thank you Chair. I just want to echo some of the things that are said around the table and also note that some of us were here the last time we faced this administration and we faced issues around Title X services and having to fund those when those were stripped from land parenthood. So again, sometimes we can be the last line of defense and that's what we're here for. We're here for you. We're here for all of our citizens and we're in it. We're in it for you for the next four years and we're gonna do the work.
Thank you. Commissioner Robby?
Well, I guess we're going around the table. Everybody's gotta say something, right? I'll be brief. So obviously I started in the state legislature in 2016 when Trump won his first election and that experience, those six years that I was in the legislature before when he was president were some of the most stressful and eye-opening times that I experienced as an elected official, having, you know, lived through obviously the physical attacks on elected officials and on government buildings at our state level, the threats, the violence, the very real emails, phone calls and physical alter, you know, physical presence that people had in our offices to see sort of the, frankly, like the worst of people and how they viewed their elected officials and their government. And I think that is very intentional, the desire, the intent to erode the trust that the people have in their government because it translates to policies that erode trust and in government. And I think that's unfortunately what everybody around this table is talking about. We are bracing ourselves for an attack that is not, hopefully, will not be like the attacks that we've experienced before that are physical in nature. It will be an all-out attack on our ability to conduct business. And I think that there is generally going to be a movement nationally towards shrinking the size of government, reducing the services that we provide. I'm concerned about the fact that we talked about that $120 million in Medicaid. I'm concerned about Obamacare, I'm concerned about coverage. I think that these things could go away frankly overnight within the first couple of months of a Trump trifecta. And I think this is going to cause massive pain for residents. And when I say pain, I don't mean like a metaphorical pain. I mean like a literal physical pain because people are going to lose their insurance and they're gonna lose their coverage. But I guess what I would say on like the hopeful side is like in in the beginning, government was founded to help people. Government is a collection of all of us and it is made up from everybody, all the residents in all of our districts, whether they be citizens or not, that are coming together and speaking their mind and speaking their truth and speaking collectively to the power that we can all accomplish together. And so government is made for hurricanes, government is made for natural disasters, government is made for conflicts, government is made for, you know, trying times like the ones that we are embarking on. And it is our calling, it is our purpose, it is the reason that the nine of us ran for office and were elected to step up to this moment and to make sure that everybody, all the hundreds of thousands of residents in our county know that as my colleagues have said, that this county government has their back, that we are here to serve everybody and we are here to step up where we can in the gaps that are being created by our federal government. And we can only do our best with the resources that we have and the limitations that we have and I'm sure that there will be more that come, but this is our purpose, this is our calling. It is times like these, whether it's a tornado or what happened last night, it's the same reaction. It is a crisis and we need to all step up to it and make it happen for our residents because every person that suffers, every person that suffers physically, emotionally, mentally, every person that continues to be unhoused, that is a problem that every person is valued in our community and we are gonna step up and make sure that everyone is protected and taken care of to the best that we can. So this is our moment to step forward and I appreciate all of you and I'm honored to serve with you as we embark on these trying times that some of us have experienced and navigated before. So at least we have unfortunately had that experience. But these are new times and we're gonna have to brace ourselves for new challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. All right, we have no pending items, so I would look for motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. I know it.